...of Rappahannock County Planning Commission's order. First item on the agenda, we have got the agenda. We're having a couple of developments that I think we can relate to. The agenda, first of all, a new business. Item one, the Henry Conference Center application. I believe that has been withdrawn because of some revisitation of the acreage department. But I believe we can start getting to the agenda. And also with respect to the SBHD sibling with Conference and Events Center. I don't believe we received any additional information on that application.
That's correct.
And I think we were looking for some advice. So I think we can remove that one then. Probably should keep it off until we get the trigger to put requested information. That would be item two of our full business. Are there any other suggestions we can make to the agenda as per these? If not, I'm taking a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Would you like to move the amendments?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very much. The next item on the agenda is we have a couple of different minutes per set from the conference meeting supervisors on page twenty-nine. I don't have any revisions. I don't have any changes to... No.
If there's no revisions, I would move to approve the amendments.
And that's just from your joint meeting?
That we're just doing the joint meeting right now.
Okay, I'll sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions here? Next is the minutes from the November twentieth meeting, and I had a couple of suggestions On page six, near the bottom, chair lights did the current application to bed and breakfast and convert into a country, and it would be an extensive use, allowing up to four guests. I believe I should say could potentially be an extensive use, allowing up to four guests. I was referring to the categories as stated in the document. That was not a statement about what they intended to do, so I want to clarify that. And then on the top of page eight, instead of requests, it should be guests. Second line, second paragraph. On page nine, third paragraph, Mr. Andrew Root recommends approval of the application that's presented at one hundred ninety-nine feet, time limit to get further, a proffer that the natural properties are will not be removed by conditions, state a condition that the natural tree property is removed. And then, second to last paragraph on page nine, the commission discussed the need to have the amendment completed. I believe that should say this amendment considered. To say completed implies that we were planning to move ahead with that. I think the discussion was around the need to have a public hearing which we're going to have tonight, therefore we feel accurate to say it's considered. And I think those are my two things.
Under the public comment period, I did notice that one of the names on page two marked milkford candy should be nutford candy. I do not wish mine changed. Those are the only changes I would move that we adopt, the benefits as amended.
One second. No further discussion. Hope we had anything else. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? So ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is the first of three opportunities for the public to address the commission this evening. First one is the general public comment period. You're free to address a matter you think relevant to us. I would note that the second opportunity for public input will be the public hearing on the CWS Woodville Tower site location. So if you're planning to have remarks on that tower, I would prefer that you wait until we have that hearing. And then finally, we also have a public hearing on the text amendment to Article twelve, the sign exemption for fire and rescue companies. So that would be a separate public hearing item tonight. So if your remarks pertain to either of those two items, the Woodville Tower or the sign exemption, I suggest that you wait for those hearings. But anything else, it's fair game during public comment. They're a pretty good crowd tonight. I'm going to try to look for, keep in touch to a five-minute minimum, but more than... Mostly want to keep me orderly and moving forward. And again, as always, we have a mic tonight, so if you wouldn't mind coming forward, identifying yourself, either your address or the district, and your chooses, I would much appreciate it. With that, I will open the public comment. Anyone who would like to speak? Thank you for going first.
I'm Diane Bruce, and I live in Sparrowville in the Piedmont District. And I want to talk about our white cell tower. It is already erected, of course, and I don't know how long it's been here, maybe a year. It doesn't have anything connected to it so far. I have taken a picture of it. I don't know if you've all seen it or not, but I'd like to give it to you so you can see what it looks like. And if you look in the kind of the right-hand side of that picture, you'll see a couple of telephone poles, except you really can't see those telephone poles because they are so much the same color as the background behind the white cell tower. We know that there's been some talk about painting the cell tower so that it blends in with the background. I have some petitions here of people who have signed asking for the board to consider painting it. That's not something you would consider, but you would, of course, make your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors at some point. I would like to submit these. I think we've already submitted some fifty signatures, and I'm not sure, maybe there are another fifty here. If I could pass those up, please. I also know that the Shenandoah National Park did not want to see this thing painted that color. I believe that there was some kind of letter or recommendation from them that both this board and the Board of Supervisors received. I know it's done, but if there's any way you can make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that it should be painted, I think those of us who live in Sparrowville, those of us who have to look at it, and the people in the park, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Thank you. My name is Sally Ann Andrew, and I operate a tourist home on forty-one Christmas Street Lane for over two years now. Earlier today, I withdrew my application for a special exception permit, which I was asking if I may add to my current business the opportunity to do eight to twelve events with a maximum of one hundred persons. And as you are all aware, I was on tonight's agenda. The reason I withdrew my application was because this week, Michelle Summers, who I've been working very closely with, advised me that in actual fact, the category that was provided me to apply for did not actually fit, and there appears not to be a fit for me. So I must share with you that I don't want to be a conference center, which is the category that I was placed under to submit for. I would like the opportunity to just do a few small events, community events, retreats or retreats during the year. I have a fifty-foot right-of-way, and the doctor sent a letter on my behalf with positive feedback. I'm not asking for it to be a right-of-use, but to be able to hold such events with reasonable standards. I would therefore like to ask the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to create a zoning ordinance omentement to allow such a use as an additional permitted use to a B and B or a tourist home with reasonable standards. And I would very much appreciate your support and look forward to maybe looking at this again in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Patty Peterson, and I live on Sparrowville Pike. I'm in the Piedmont District. And I just want to reinforce the comments of my neighbor, Diane Bruce. I know we have a fantastic company with the tower already on the horizon, but I'm also a member of the Shenandoah National Park Trust. And I know from the work I do there and my citizenship here in Sparrowville that the way we handle the view shed is not just an item of beauty, which it is, but it's about the ability of this area to continue to attract people to come here, to buy at our local stores, to want to stay overnight, and to appreciate what we have every day. And so while we have the tower up, I think we really have to think about its impact on this treasure we have. And I know that CWS has said that it would cost $25,000 to paint it. I'm not sure that that is an absolute. I think that we should ask how they got that figure, whether or not that it could be reduced significantly, whether or not when anything has to go on the tower, what it will look like, and when they do that, whether painting could commence at that time. I think there are lots of ways to approach this. And while it's up, it doesn't have to be an eyesore and a light on the horizon. And again, it's not just a nicety. It has to do with our ability to continue to attract people to our businesses, to our B and Bs, and other things that really meant for our economy and this what we count together. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course. Anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm Sally Haines from the Piedmont District, and I've spoken on this before, so I won't repeat those things, but I will just say that I was most happy to read that CWS had said they would consider painting a monopole in Sparrowville. I think that would be a wonderful thing for us, and let's keep the pressure on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak, other than Mr. Conick? What would you change on?
David Conick from Stonewall District. I just want to agree with everything that Diane Bruce and these other nice ladies said, and remind you that some of the conditions that some of the other counties had, like Falkir on their comp plan about cell towers, one of the conditions was it can't be within 5,000 feet of any park, national or local or any other park. And I don't know if that's, I mean, I don't know if that's the right number for Rappahannock, but if we had a provision like that or some kind of special conditions, that would have to be taken into account. If it was within that distance of the park, we would be having this problem, but I think this whole thing just goes to show that the standards that we have in the current plan now are really inadequate. Thanks, and Merry Christmas, planning commission.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I always have a battle with this thing. Can you hear me anyway? Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. First of all, I want to get one little thing out of the way. One of, it was either planning or zoning, I can't remember which. Is Al Henry, is not part of your group, is he?
He is.
Okay, goes here. Sorry. We were talking about the view shed and about the entrance to the county and how we need to guard that, and there was a conversation about a specific property that was, would be impacting the view shed. I didn't think that was true, so I went out and I took a picture. So this is coming into Rappahannock County westward, going past the property that was asking for a specific thing. And the only thing you can see is in the distance on the right, you can see some buildings past Muskrat Farm, but you cannot see anything on the left-hand side of the road. And that's in the winter time. That was only about a month ago. So then I went and said, okay, I'll try to go in the other direction. So this is going into Warrington, about the same spot on the road, and I took a picture. The property, I couldn't figure out why I couldn't see it. I thought there'd been a hill there. And what it was is it's down away from the road. So this is going in the opposite direction. That's with all the leaves off the trees, so you really can't, so it's not really disturbing the view shed. So I think when people are talking about things, they really need to support their conversations with facts. And so I've given you a visual as to that specific thing, because it disturbed me then. That was just blatantly said. The other thing, quickly, at the work session, I know we know we're talking about population and the diversity of the population. And one of the things we've talked about are what we need in our county is to replace the jobs that have been lost. And so there's a saying, that a rising tide lifts all boats. So if we can get our economic growth going, and it only needs to be like two or three percent, not a lot, we're not looking for Gatlinburg or anything, you then will be able to get younger kids able to work here again. And at the last meeting I went to, we had a young man who was talking about affordable housing. He was saying he'd grown up here, he'd gone away for a while, he'd come back, and he really would like something instead of just a room in somebody's house. He'd like to be able to get the opportunity to be able to purchase the house. Now, my parents always said, don't expect to start where your parents left off. These kids aren't looking for a house. They're probably looking for something small to be able to rent, and even that's a difficulty here. We do have a new thing on Facebook, RappNet, called rapprenters.net or dot org, and they are tracking people who are looking for housing and trying to help them find housing, renting or buying, which I think is really great. The only other thing I'm going to say about comprehensive planning, the more specific you get, the more you're going to have lawyers salivating for lawsuits. I think Mr. Curry made a good point at the work session, was that it's not perfect. Nothing is perfect. You're always going to have something added. But to be able to bring this thing to its conclusion, and then go on and make a plan for the next one, is going to be a smart way to go about it. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? No, I hereby close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the CWS Woodville Tower. Same rules if you would, if you please. Anyone who would like to speak? Okay. So you have, yes, sorry, Ms. Summers, do you mind teaming up the hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CWS originally filed for a new cell phone tower at what we call the Woodville site on property owned by Eldon Farms. At the October seventh, two thousand and nineteen Board Supervisors' Trailer Meeting, the board accepted an offer by CWS for an extension of sixty days of the shop block time period for the consideration. As part of this mutual agreement, the Planning Commission delayed consideration. At its November twentieth, at the Planning Commission's November twentieth meeting, the commission decided they want another public hearing due to CWS's offer to lower this tower site to a one hundred and thirty-nine foot tower, and also from a lattice tower to a monopole. And for the possible side, possible effects of the lower the tower, CWS has increased presence and has a PowerPoint presentation to the Planning Commission.
So we have the application, I made my remarks, and then the board from here.
Good evening. I'm Hope McPerry with Community Wireless Structures. I will try to be brief by how we had multiple discussions about this site, and everybody is relatively familiar, but I wanted just to review a few things and really focus primarily on going over the changes that we are proposing to make to the original application. Michelle? So again, we have two applications pending with the county, one for a tower in Scrabble area and one near the town of Woodville. The two red dots on that map are the two proposed towers. The green dots are the existing towers that CWS built in Sparrowville and Boston. To go to the next slide, this demonstrates that with the completion of the two proposed towers, the county would be in a situation where there's infrastructure along pretty much the full length, county border to county border of two eleven and five twenty-two, the two major transportation routes in the county would be fully covered with cell tower infrastructure. This is a coverage map that Chantel Sprint had provided to us, which shows that when Chantel, who is Sprint affiliated in this market, installs on all the existing and available towers, they would be able to provide complete and seamless coverage along those transportation So the, as you know, and Michelle just indicated, the one hundred ninety-nine foot tower at Scrabble was recommended for approval to the board by the Planning Commission at last month's meeting. The Woodville Tower, we offered some significant modifications, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about those. Yeah. So first and foremost, we have offered to lower the height from the original one hundred ninety-nine foot structure that we proposed to one hundred and thirty-nine, the sixty-foot reduction, that's about a thirty percent reduction in the structure height. We really believe that that reduction in height will have a significant impact on the view shed. From a lot of vantage points, we think that now, again, with the reduced height, this tower will be no more impactful, and a lot of the utility lines and utility infrastructure that currently run across five twenty-two up and down the property is bordering five This is a letter that Chantel had provided to us last month. I think the Planning Commission all received a copy of it. In it, they, no, go back. In it, Chantel reiterated the fact that while there will be some degradation of coverage to the residents and businesses living, abiding the site, the one hundred thirty-nine foot structure will provide very adequate coverage for the road, which is Chantel's primary objective as part of the initial expansion into Rappahannock County. We've heard, as Will Mur say in the past, that that's what, that's the way that Chantel approaches a new territory. They try to cover the major transportation routes first, and then once that's in place, they can look to see what other coverage they can provide. The other thing, you'll have to go back to the letter, but the other thing that the letter says is it reiterates Chantel's intention and commitment to go on all four of the CWS sites, the Boston, Sparrowville, Woodville, and Scrabble, should they get built. These are some photo simulations that we prepared. The ones on the right at one hundred ninety-nine feet are the same ones that we submitted with our application, but we had our, the guy that does this for us do an extrapolation. We didn't refly a balloon, but we did an extrapolation just to see kind of how that view would change with the thirty percent height reduction. Here's a view going south on five twenty-two, you know, I guess about two-thirds of a mile away, and you can see, you know, where this structure was very prominent at one hundred ninety-nine feet. We're predicting that it will be much, much less prominent at one hundred and thirty-nine feet. Not invisible from this spot, but less visible. Go to the next one, Michelle. This is a view the other direction is traveling north on five twenty-two. This was one of the most prominent views that we saw from the road, the one on the right at one hundred ninety-nine feet. Here it is at one hundred and thirty-nine. Again, you still see it, but you really only see the very tip-top of the structure, not the higher structure. And if you go one more, this was the third one, this is a little bit further distance. It was never particularly prominent just because of the distance. This is close to a mile south at the Cloverhill Home Entrance on Eldon Farm, but at, again, from this location at the lower height, you're not going to see it at all between distance and height. Go ahead. This is, everybody is aware of this, but just as a reminder, this is, you know, one view of the telephone line, power line, infrastructure down five twenty-two. This is another one that crosses five twenty-two. And this next photo is actually a photo of the site itself, where we're proposing to locate the tower. It will be kind of up on that knoll that you see there on the left side of the photo, and it is literally, I've mentioned this before, but I don't know if anyone's focused on it, the tower will be adjacent to these existing power lines that run across Eldon's property there.
I'm sorry, could you more specifically locate the...
Well, it's, do you see how the hill goes up there to the left? It's literally just off this photo.
Before the tree, before the trees?
In front of the trees, yeah.
So to the left?
Correct.
And which way are we facing here? It's very south.
I would say we're facing southwest.
West.
Yeah. That would be my guess. I didn't take the photo. So in addition to the height modification, we've offered to build an expensive monopole structure instead of the lattice, the open lattice structure that we had originally proposed, and we've also offered to paint it if asked, and if that's the preference. Go to the next slide. These are two poles that CWS built, one in Loudon, and I think Brandy Station is in Culpeper. This first one is, you know, the pole's fully painted, sort of a greenish-brown, and the next one is another option that we have done on several occasions, which we call graduated, you know, green at the bottom, transitioning to sky color at the top. And then, this is something we haven't talked about before, but we like to suggest that we put these green slats that we use occasionally in the chain link fence. Go to the next photo. This is one that we built in Dockyard County, and it just, it just helps to screen the equipment that's on the ground, screens the fence, helps the fence blend in with what's around. This particular site, I don't think anyone is really going to see the base of the tower from the road or joining properties, other than the folks on Eldon Farm, but it's still, I think, would be a nicer appearance than just the chain link. And finally, the last modification we've talked about, which is just withdrawing our request for a waiver of the removal bond, so that if the tower goes out of service and CWS doesn't live up to its commitment to take down the tower, the county will have the resources to do so. We do still need these four waivers that were part of our original application to be able to use a microwave dish for telecommunications backhaul until the weather is available. We'd like to waive the landscaping requirement around the base of the tower. Again, we're proposing the green slatted fence is a better solution there. We need to be able to sign the use permit in case we sell the tower and we want to utilize a gravel farm road instead of what's in the ordinance, which is more substantial type of access road. So again, I'm here to ask that the Planning Commission recommend our application for approval to the board, just to review the benefits to Rappahannock County. This tower along with the Scrabble tower is... This tower along with the Scrabble, uh, tower, if it's approved, will provide wireless connectivity, um, you know, uninterrupted up and down 522. Um, we've heard, um, Chantel before, um, and other carriers that they, they prefer to have a network of sites available, even if they can't go on all of them at once because of limited resources. They like to know that they'll be able to cover uninterrupted, um, transportation corridors when they're ready. Um, local residents will, will, um, have access to, to broadband with, with the, uh, Virginia broadband installed on this tower. Um, probably one of the most important benefits, of course, is improved public safety, reliable communication, uh, with first responders in the event of an emergency, uh, who do have fire and rescue and school board support for this tower. You've seen the letters, but I included them here. This is, uh, from Mr. Bebo, um, and I thought I could read that to you if I highlighted it, but I can't. Um, but I think you've seen it and, and he, he's writing on behalf of the fire and rescue community in support of the tower. Um, and the next letter is the one from the school board, and I think their interest was primarily, um, uh, in relation to school bus safety and, and, uh, sent this letter out before last month's meeting saying that they supported our two towers. We've also talked about the fact that county needs broadband. A lot of the counties nearby have used, um, taxpayer funds to, to provide that service. We're offering to do that with private capital instead of public. Um, this is something I haven't talked about before, capitalize on current carrier interest. There's been a lot of interest to CWS in this market. Um, recently, we know T-Mobile has a lease at Sperryville and at Boston. Um, Chantel has said they want to go on all four sites. We have two leases with them and two pending signature. And recently Verizon has applied with us for the Sperryville site. Um, we received their, their engineering drawings yesterday. They're going full speed ahead and hope for a first quarter 2020 install. Um, so there's a lot of carrier interest right now. If infrastructure's not built, that carrier interest, that money that's allocated for this market's going to go somewhere else. I don't know how long it'll take the county to get another, um, structure, you know, put, put in front of you for this area, but, you know, strike while the iron's hot, I guess is what I'm, I'm trying to say there. Um, we did evaluate multiple sites. We know this one isn't perfect. Um, and, you know, but some of the, the positive things about this site is on Eldon's property. They control 7,000 acres. There are very few immediate neighbors who are impacted or some. And it has all the other pieces that we need, you know, ultimately access to fiber, access to power. It's in the right spot for the carriers, where Eldon would like to have it, and on and on. Um, and finally, we've, you know, we think that the visual impact has been improved uh, with the proffers that we've, um, put forth, the modifications to the application. Um, you know, someone said this to us and it kind of resonated that, you know, in their, it was, one of the citizens said to us, you know, this is a, a, it's, it's a beautiful area, it's an incredible view shed. This is going to impact a sliver of that view shed. It is literally one single structure along a huge, you know, huge length of, of beauty. Um, people driving up and down the road are going to pass it. They will see it for seconds, um, if they turn their head to look at it. Um, we did move it further off the road so it wasn't as head-on of view when you're driving morning south on 522. It's a little bit more off to the side. That's all I have. Thank you for listening and I'm happy answering your questions.
Thank you.
And Jess, I don't know if I can sentence this circuit, Chantel, but she can answer questions.
I don't think we have any questions at this time, but we, thank you for the, uh... Uh, so with that, I will hereby open the public hearing again. If you'd like to speak on this application, please go forward. And, uh, something about where you're hail from, and please try to leave your remarks for five minutes, then you might care to speak. Yes, Mr. Irwin?
My name is Mr. Chairman Phil Irwin, Flint Hill. You are a planning commission, and I don't much care for the way you're planning for this application, because your plan right now would destroy our only, God-given benefit asset for Rapahan County. Cell towers with a spewing ionizing radiation and unnecessary and soon-to-be outdated facilities are the ugliest thing that I can think of to be applied to the same rig, the values of Rapahan County. Great gobs of antennas have not been shown on your pictures up here. They show the tower, but eventually there'll be great arrays of antennas on top of those towers, blocking out the sky. And, uh, it is going to be outdated pretty soon. You know about the satellites that are already in orbit to begin a new alternative to this system. The Piedmont Environmental Council prepared a map of the coverage area that would be around the tower that was just approved in Madison County behind the Drake Mountain Lodge, and it shows about one-twentieth of the land in Rapahan County. These maps that you just saw here show coverage along the roads, but it doesn't show any coverage to the rest of the county. I mean, we don't, I don't live next to a main highway. Many of our residents don't live next to a main highway. And yet, that map has never been presented. You've never asked for it. You have never asked for a comprehensive engineering study of what would take, how many antennas would it take to cover Rapahan County in an equitable fashion so that everybody gets coverage? Now, we suggest that this is an unnecessary application. You do not have to approve it. There is no time restriction that I know of, and you are going to be responsible for the future of our county. Rapahan is an incomparable place, and you have the capability of either saving it or destroying it. The choice is yours. Please do not refer this to Board Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir?
No, it was going to be in my file.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rob Morgan. My wife and I, my wife is here this evening too. We live at 4311 Sperryville, by Kim Woodville, in Jackson District. We, uh, our broadband needs are all taken care of by Piedmont broadband, so we don't anticipate any benefit from the proximity of the towers. But, um, if that's a benefit to a great many people, then so be it. Uh, we watched the balloon test with great interest. And even though we're very well back through the road and fairly up high, the, the balloon was well above the mountain of the skyline at 199 feet. So if this is recommended, we would strongly support accepting the proffer of reducing the height from 199 to 139 and of changing the lattice work to a monopole. We have no opinion on the finish. We understand there are learned opinions both ways. Uh, but we have no opinion on the, uh, green slats versus chain link with landscaping. But the height and the structure concerns greatly if this is to be recommended at all. Thank you.
But anyone else?
Hi, my name is Metro Kennedy, and I'm representing my family in the Piedmont District. Our family has gone to considerable effort to submit three letters to the planning commission, which we hope you will carefully consider. Now I'm going to read from the Rapahan County's own comprehensive plan. This is Principal Three, Policy Twelve. Restrict the potential impact of utility-scale wind, solar, service towers, and other utility-scale facilities on prime agricultural land, sensitive or scenic landscapes, ridges, crests, and view sheds from scenic highways, historic sites, and other sensitive settings important to maintaining a rural county atmosphere. This sounds like a blueprint that the Eldon Farms Corporation and Community Wireless Structures use to select their site. Prime agricultural land, check. Sensitive or scenic landscape, check. View shed from scenic highway, check. View from historic site, check. The tower will be an eyesore for the entire community because it is in, in an inappropriate place. The proposed site for the cell tower is too close to our property and was clearly chosen to minimize the impact on the Eldon Farms Corporation and increase their sale value while decreasing the value of our property. Just put it on the back 500, and why, why would they care about the neighbors when they're, they're leaving the neighborhood anyway? Our family owns Millie's Cabin, which is the closest property to the proposed tower. Other than the hills and hollers, the dirt and the rocks, there are very few more historic things around Hana County. Built in 1740, it is one of the oldest structures, if not the oldest structure, in Rapahan County. And here it is on the Rapahan County's historical site calendar, 2019. Our famas, family purposely bought a property with conservation easement so this historic gem be preserved in perpetuity for future generations to enjoy. I heard Commissioner Henry say something to the effect that the considerations of one property owner should not override the greater good of the community. Fair enough, but why should it have to impact anyone at all? Moving the tower to a different part of the property would make it mu- much less impactful for everyone. After all, the Eldon Farms Corporation owns almost 12 square miles of property. I've heard Commissioner Byrd say something to the effect that would, that would be no more offensive than phone and electricity poles. I would consider a tower as tall as a 14 or 20-story building with all the associated hardware hanging off the top in the midst of a beautiful vista considerably more offensive than phone poles. I asked Commissioner Byrd this. If something that looks like this was about eye level outside the front door of his home, like it would be ours, would it still, would he still feel the same way? Something like this? Outside our historic home? With increasing technology such as 5G and beyond, the signals transmitted from these towers will become stronger and more toxic, particularly at similar elevations and close proximities to these towers. I do not want my family to be exposed to these toxic signals. Instead of relying solely on the word of an interested party such as Community Wireless Structures, the commission should seek the advice of a disinterested third party of experts to evaluate the situation. If they do not do this, then I would seriously question how the county does business. Thank you.
James Bass, Piedmont District. My concern with the tower is exactly the location that they're putting it in. A historic home is, is not necessarily the right thing to do. There are several thousand acres owned by Eldon Farms. It might be better to put it in an area that doesn't impact any of the neighbors. We've noticed, uh, that there's a fairly large tower in the town of Washington kind of for the first time this weekend, and we never did pay attention to it because it's kind of in a building zone, commercials, a building. Didn't pay any attention to it. But if you put a cell phone tower out there in the middle of the, the view shed, you're going to see that. You know, they put the little balloon up, it, it's hard to see the little balloon. But you put the big tower up, and you're going to see that with all the antennas on it. It's not the right thing to do to put it by somebody's house, especially a historic house for Rapahan County. Maybe moving it to where there's existing buildings, you know, further south, maybe, and I, and don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't mean to penalize Woodville, the town I live in, but, um, they would get better coverage than what the tower of course will currently locate if they want that, if they want coverage. But I think that you just don't want to destroy the, the view shed with the antennas. They, they mentioned the engineering study about coverage and how they can connect the towers. I would like to see some analysis like that as to, as to where the other sites were proposed and what the coverage would be. My background is exactly electronics. I've done numerous, uh, systems along those lines, radars for the Navy. So I do have some expertise in that regard. But just to say they did a study, I mean, nobody's seen the study here. The planning commission, you know, I think it should be opened up to the county to be seeing the study and see where the alternative sites might be that it would have less impact on, uh, on the county. Other than that, I can't think of anything else to, kind of, I think of.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
I've written this down, so hopefully I'll be able to get through it without being cut off. There are many towers in the world. The Eiffel Tower is metal. It looms up. It is in the view shed of anybody in front of it. It's huge, but people go and see it and it's beloved and they love it. What is the difference in the Eiffel Tower and the cell towers? They're both, um, sort of lattice. They both have metal. They're both huge. If you're in front of it, if you're in your house and it's in front of you, it's, it's an obstruction. The difference is the function of the cell tower. It is not just the view. Ron Maxwell said we were asking the wrong questions about these towers. Cell towers are hated, not just for the view, but for their purpose. They emit radiation. They emit radiation that is toxic. It gets stronger each year. The 5G that will probably end up on these towers so far is the worst. It's highly criticized. It is doing us harm and it enables spying on people very easily, the more wireless we have. And the public senses this. They may voice it as view shed, but it's not just view shed. It's the function of the tower. A tower does not fundamentally change with height, camouflage, painting, changing the shape. It's still a toxic polluting entity in the landscape. The best place, if you must have it, is miles away from any residences, farms, schools, at least several miles, isolate them. In a lot of places, they've, they've made them for industrial zones only. That way you do minimal- That way you do minimal harm. Also, they should not be in scenic, beautiful, unspoiled nature. Actually, they don't belong anywhere. We should take them down. Whether the Elton Tower is modified or not, it will cause more auxiliary towers to be brought in because they will not give us coverage throughout Rattahannock County. You're going to need more on the back roads. If it's a shorter tower, they're going to ask for even more. There will be no end to this. When you get the whole county blanketed with cell towers, you have a cullup. And you still won't have coverage because we have mountains and hills in the county. We're still not going to get coverage. Why go with cell towers? They will eat up all the fiber we have for the mission plan, fiber to the homeschooling business. They will eat it up. Fiber is pricey. You can't have endless fiber. And if it's used by the cell tower companies, we will not get fiber to the home, which is safe. Actually, and I've sent this history, I sent it during the Sperryville Tower. But we have paid for the dormant fiber that's under the ground that isn't being used. We may not have paid for the one that's going to be erected by Rattahannock Electric Co-op. But the dormant fiber was paid for. So during the 1990s, AT&amp;T and Verizon could bring fiber to every home with the increase on our bills. So it's been paid for. They did a bait and switch. And after they got the backbones in all over the country, they started channeling it into their private cellphone companies, which were not public utilities. So basically, they stole the money off our phone bills, which should have brought fiber to our homes, and we never got the fiber. And so miles of dormant unused fibers all around the country. They just discovered some in Graves Mountain. They want to put the cell tower and they discovered fiber under the ground. That's been there for years, unused. It is free. It belongs to the public, except that the cell tower companies claim it. You have to go to court, but it is free. The best technology for emergencies and power outages is fiber. Fiber phone, fiber TV, fiber internet, with a backup of landlines because they don't go down with electricity. The worst technology is cellular technology for emergencies. It goes down, when the power goes down, it's unreliable. Like I say, it's blocked by a hill, it's blocked by a curve, it's blocked by a mountain. No matter how many towers we put up, you're still going to go around a curve and say, "I can't get a signal here." And you're going to be frustrated. That's the nature of the technology and our terrain. Conclusion: We should not recommend the Eldon Towers, the Eldon Farms Tower in any form, modified or unmodified. And we do not need better cell service. We need more reliable emergency service, which is fiber and landlines. We need better connectivity. That's different from cellphone service. Our mission statement, it was in the comprehensive plan before they ever submitted their applications. If they eat up all the fiber and we're a small, sparsely populated county, we will never get fiber to the home. We will never get it. It's going to be towers. It's going to be broadband from towers. It's going to be cellphones from towers. It's going to be all of this stuff. So many people, like the gentleman in Woodville, he said, "I don't need the towers." Piedmont broadband substitutes for Virginia broadband. It's up and down 522. Satellite dish, you can run your new cellphone up a satellite dish. You can run it up with Piedmont broadband if it's a new model phone. We don't need the towers. We're across from it and we already have a Sprint signal. We already have a Sprint signal and Sprint's saying, "Well, you need our services." No, we don't. We already have it and we don't use it. We have it and we don't use it.
Ms. Bryce, if I could ask you to please try to wrap it up for a minute?
Okay. Anyway, my suggestion is not to approve it at all in any form. And if it doesn't go in, the Scrabble won't go in. The Scrabble is far worse. It's near too many homes. It won't go in. And so much of what she said was lies. I could spend all day deconstructing what she said, so pay no attention to them. Thank you.
Would anyone else care to speak?
I'm not sure we even need a tower in Woodville. My recollection, when we put the six towers in that we have now, and that must have been twenty or more years ago, I seem to remember we were told that a tower can emit a signal at least three miles from the tower. So if the Sperryville Tower can emit three miles and the Scrabble Tower can emit three miles, those two towers can talk to one another without having to put one between them. Now, I may be mistaken about the three mile radius, but I tend to remember that. You've not had a study done yet. That may shorten your studies or perhaps you can answer that question. But it just seems to me that we don't even need this tower on Eldon Farm. And one of the things that the lady said was that carriers prefer a network of towers. I'm not sure why they prefer a network, especially if they don't need one here or one over there. Why do we have to have so many? I looked at the topographic maps for that area between Sperryville and Woodville. And I believe that the location of the one near Millie's Cabin is going to sit on a ridge, I would call it, that's about 600 feet in elevation. If they were to put a 200-foot tower on it, you get 800 feet. If they reduce the height, of course, you get less coverage because it's reduced. That tower is not going to provide much service to anybody except right along Route 522. It's not going to go over the mountain to Slate Mills. It's not going to go down to Route 231. It's just going to be a little bit of area right there. And I feel like you've got that coverage by connecting Sperryville to Scrabble. If you really want to provide coverage in the county, put it on one of the mountains that's onto 7,000 acres. Put it on Slaughter Mountain. Put it on Fielding Mountain. Look at your topo maps. Those mountains are 1,000 feet in elevation. If you put it on Millie's Ridge at 600 and add 139 feet, you only have 739 feet of elevation. You don't have as much as if you were to put it on Slaughter Mountain or Fielding Mountain. The lady who made the presentation said that if she uses lattice, it's cheaper. But it's more expensive to paint a monopole white or any other color. Is that what you said?
Ma'am?
It's the opposite of it? Well, I don't want to say something that I misunderstood.
I understand, but I don't want to get involved.
Well, her comments did-
Sorry, if you'd like us to ask for clarification, certainly feel free to-
You can ask when I'm finished. I'm sure you will. What she did say, though, is that the carriers prefer to have their towers along the highways. The highways don't provide much coverage. These towers will not provide any coverage for our back roads. So when law enforcement or fire and rescue or a person like myself's car breaks down on the back road, I will have no protection from cell service because he won't be there. It's only going to be for me if I go to cullup or on Route 522. So I don't think you need this tower. If you have to have this tower at that location, there is already a silo there. We have one tower, we have two towers in the county that are in silos. That's another possibility. If you feel like you have to have the tower, put it in something so it doesn't look so ugly. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else who likes? Any other comments on this application? Last call. I will hereby close the public hearing of this application. This application is in my district, but I would prefer to hear first from my fellow commissioners if I may. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll defer to you when you'd like to.
Go ahead, Mary Catherine. If you'd like to. Thank you. I'll take this opportunity to start. And again, I thank everybody for their comments, you know, their strongly held positions for the community. And I do thank CWS for the information they provided to us and offering their service to us. But yeah, I think the, because I see a pressure really for us balance and that's a hard thing to do. I have on my screen saver on my computer a picture that I took many, many years ago from the first landing, I guess, on Red Oak Mountain Road. And you look out and you get the magnificent view of the Eldon Farms and the mountains behind it. And I've taken friends and guests up there many times. And as we all know, if you go up to the top of Red Oak Mountain and look out there, it's like something out of a religious speech, literally. I mean, there's, any community on the face of the earth would treasure that. And everybody that brings up there, they gasp because it's, you don't get that every day. So how do we get what we want in cellphone coverage and yet preserve those views that only Rattahannock County has? So I guess on this particular application, what I would have loved to have seen, I do appreciate that the applicant has made some significant concessions toward the view shed protection. I would have liked to see them come back with a better way to conceal the visibility of this tower. And I don't feel like what they have now does the trick for the community. I think that, again, there's a potential silo, which that is not what this applicant wants to do, I understand. But I think that might help. Backdrop against the mountain, as we have in other places, might help. Or even the possibility of a different location. But if they want this location, then I think it has to be concealed better. So I'm also a little concerned by the fact that when we have, I was not on the plan at that time, but when our Board of Supervisors approved the Sperryville Tower, it was presented to the public as a standalone site. And now what we find is basically a corridor of cellphone towers along 522 that we're being told is necessary to provide the coverage that we need. I don't know if that's true or not. That's what the applicant tells us and I accept their word for that. But I do know that the propagation maps that they've chosen to provide to us show a different frequency than many of our carriers have on them. And that frequency they show on the propagation maps doesn't travel as far as some of the lower frequencies do. So, you know, without having carriers on the Sperryville Tower, we just have to rely on the applicant's assertions that in fact that tower was needed. But I will say, if the tower is needed, then it has to fit in the view shed there, in that iconic historic area. So that's my concern with this.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, what's your comment?
I have one question for the applicant, and that is simply, the propagation map that we originally received for the 199-foot tower at this location, has this been updated to reflect the changes at 139 feet?
We have not provided that.
Okay. I just wanted to address a few comments that were made this evening regarding engineering studies. I took these concerns up to the Board of Supervisors at our last meeting. And we, as a board, are taking advantage of our relationship with federal engineering to look at propagation and our coverage maps for the different scenarios involving Sperryville Tower and Boston Tower and two possible tower locations, you know, from a third party independently. So I just wanted to make clear that that is, that has been taken up by the Board of Supervisors so that information will be available for consideration when we evaluate these at that level. I just wanted to echo Miss issues' comments and also say that I believe the concessions that CWS has made for this site reveal how critically important this site is and how sensitive this site is. Unfortunately, in my opinion, with the view shed impacts, it still won't mitigate as much as it should. And I do appreciate the concessions, but to me, it's just an area where it will be far too visible as proposed. That's all I have to say.
Oh, three. I would not like the look of the 199-foot tower or the balloon test. The, I had people tell me that it would hopefully get them coverage, but it really didn't. Lowering the tower doesn't provide a lot of coverage to anybody except just when you want growth and what I can tell. The, I'm not personally very satisfied with the sighting of where the tower is. And I am, I would like to see, I would like to see something better. I have concerns that I understand EMS concerns and education concerns. I'm not sure that either is being solved by lowering the tower and inspection. I also don't want to see a higher tower standing up and violating a criminal goal in the comprehensive plan. So that's what I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Going this way if I may. Appreciate what my fellow commissioners and the public has had to say about this. I do think we need better coverage. I understand the desire to put these sites first along the highway arteries, but I also hear some compelling commentary tonight about other possibilities on this parcel. And the fact that it is such a large parcel without our ability to do the evaluation is hard to know what we're getting. Much return on the investment of sacrificing a view both from a certain prominent spot, like Red Oak Tower, or from a historic property like that. So I have tried very hard to sort of see my way clear and support this because I do feel we need coverage and broadband. But without the coverage, clearly understood, and without the equipment on the two towers adjacent, I think it makes it difficult for us to see the need and see the value. And I guess the other thing that's become clear is, while I think in general there is a lot of population along our highways, this particular stretch, because so much of it is the Eldon Farm property, it seems that a few properties would actually probably get the coverage. And many of those properties have been the ones who, owners who've come here saying they would, to whatever extent they might like to have the coverage, they don't want to sacrifice the view to get it. So- So those are my thoughts. Mr. Bird.
It seems to me, in the positioning of a cell phone tower, I would liken it to keeping all the possums up the tree while you're possum hunting. And it involves the access to build it, the access for the signal to come through either a landline or fiber optic line, the ability to achieve the distance coverage from the cell tower itself to the recipients of the signal, and the location of the target, meaning the roads particularly in this case. And basically, it seems to me, we're making a decision here that are we going to have this level of cell coverage or not? And there doesn't seem to be much alternative at the moment than the proposed towers. And one can only imagine giving the tower company the benefit of the doubt, that they have studied the problem and they are trying to solve it, given the parameters within which they operate. And they seem to be the only alternative at the moment. And I think, as Ms. Smith suggested, that when it comes time for the supervisors to decide if they can use their independent propagation and range studies to advantage or to better advantage than we can, that would be certainly a good opportunity. But it does seem to me unfair to find the cell tower company guilty until proven innocent, when at every opportunity, they have accommodated our wishes by giving us more time to decide, by lowering the tower, and meeting with us many times at our suggestion. And I don't really know the answer to these questions, but it would seem to me that until I knew better than I think they do, I would give them the benefit of the doubt. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
I guess I would like to, I appreciate that sentiment. I guess, if I may, I think there's been a lot of, we've put forward at several times the desire to have it covered with minimal impact. I do think that some points have been made, that this is a very large parcel, there are higher points of elevation. I think what we're left to conclude, and I think it's fairly well stated, is that this area would be needed to fill the gap, but the selection of the specific location on this parcel is driven by some combination of cost considerations and the desire to keep the view, protect a view from certain parts of the property that it is on. So I guess I find that those points compel me to feel that there may be a better alternative to get something that's less visually impactful and is still perhaps on that same parcel, but in a less visibly obtuse form.
Mr. Light?
Yes, please.
Is there an opportunity for me to address any specific, because there's a little bit of misinformation here?
I will turn to you in a moment, if I, I guess, I mean, I kind of came back second by the apple. Does anyone else commission have any questions specifically for the applicant or other comments that you'd like to make to the rest of us?
I might have some questions, if some of the applicant would like to speak.
Please, if there's something you want to hear.
Just a couple of points of clarification. With regard, I can't remember, because these meetings have sort of morphed together, but I know there was one that you weren't present at, and we spent quite a bit of time talking about some of what Mr. Bird was alluding to, and that's sort of how we came to this location. And, you know, we did focus on, and the first thing that happens is that the carriers say to us, you know, this is kind of a dot on a map, a general area that we need to be in order to adequately cover this area. And they gave us a spot at Scrabble, and they gave us a spot at Woodville. And then from there, we started looking for ground, we identified Eldon Farms, obviously, most of the property there. We, and I provided some, in prior meetings, a lot of detail on this, but we looked at six different locations on Eldon Farms. And we started much further back and much closer to, I think, the Squatter Mountain. We ended up having to just, and we literally went through three sets of engineering drawings, three sets of initial phases of the process, which is a very expensive, you know, it's not something we do lightly. I mean, it's thousands of dollars each time we evaluate a new site. The original site was found to be too far south, essentially. That was one of the issues. We had to move from a carrier's perspective further north. But the other problem with it, that we were wrestling with, had the carrier said, yeah, that's an okay spot, is cost. I mean, it would probably have cost close to $100,000 just to build the road to that tower. And nobody in these meetings likes to hear me talk about cost or throw that into consideration, but it is. You know, this is a rural community. It's not, you know, downtown Washington DC or northern Virginia. I mean, it, you know, it is, it is one of the last areas to get built out, as you know. The carriers don't spend as much money in these rural areas because there isn't the population base. So, you know, when we build a site and we rent it or lease it to a carrier, we get less rent than we do, you know, so it all has to come together. So, you know, we start out, where does the carrier want to be, what's around? Then we start looking at, you know, what's going to cost to build it? Where's the ground where we want it to be? Can we get fiber to it? That's another problem. You know, somebody said, well, just put it up on the mountain. You can't get there. There's no, in the foreseeable future, there's no chance we're going to get fiber to that site. In order for this equipment to work at its best in a way the carriers want it to, it needs fiber, it needs power. You know, so it's not, you can't just sort of say, just put it here. You know, I mean, yes, that would be great, perhaps, from a view shed standpoint, although we've often been shot down putting stuff high up because, and it's sticking up above the ridge. You know, Ishi and a couple others may have, in prior meetings, have mentioned the beautiful views from Red Oak Mountain. Mr. Ryan provided some photo simulations that I thought were very helpful to us, because the views from up there are against the ridge line. And if this tower is painted, you're not going to see it. Painted the right color, excuse me. So, you know, I, I'm not, to me, that, the views from Red Oak Mountain, I don't think are really an issue here, or at least as far as I can tell. There are views from 522, you know, no question about it. A couple other comments that I heard that I wanted to just touch on, you know, there was some comment about not wanting to put it near a historical house. And I do, obviously, this house is old and has historic value, but I just want to reiterate, I think I said this previously, that the state Historic Resource Protection Officer has looked at this. They look at everything within a half a mile of the tower site and decide whether they think there is a negative impact on that historic resource. They said, no, no adverse impact. The Rappahannock County Historical Society was asked to comment on our application, and they sent a letter back saying, we have no concerns. That was in our application, I believe, or in one of my power points. So I'm not sure that's a legitimate, I mean, we've done, you know, the things that we were asked to do to look at historic, you know, proximity isn't the only issue. How much of it can you see from the parcel? There are intermingling trees between that cabin and our site. And you can see it from certain places on the property, but at the lower height, I don't think you're going to see much of it from the front of the house. You know, just in terms of propagation studies and coverage maps and all of that, I haven't wanted to get into this a whole lot, but it seems to be, you know, a big issue. And the state of Virginia enacted new telecom legislation in July of 2018. I have a copy of it with me. And, you know, one of the things it says, I mean, the state, you know, put some regulations in place that basically say the localities cannot ask for propagation maps. They cannot deny an application based on second guessing the applicant's decision for need. And I think the reason the state did that is because it's very complicated, you know? Each carrier has some broad frequencies. Each carrier has different frequencies, and they use a blend of those frequencies, you know, to show propagation, you know, just at one or just at the other. It's all a blend, and it, you know, there's topography involved, there's other sites, and each carrier is slightly different. So we try, again, to put infrastructure where we think it will work for everyone. There is absolutely zero, somebody said, do we need the tower? There is zero incentive for us or for the carrier to put a tower where it's not needed. Nobody makes money from a tower that's sitting there. Carriers spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a site to put equipment. They wouldn't do that if they could cover, they always want to, you know, do with less because they have only a limited amount of capital available. If we don't have a carrier wanting to go on there, we don't make any money. We're in the business of, we're in sort of commercial real estate business. We build a structure and then we rent it out. So that's the last thing I want to say about that. But, you know, I think the state has kind of said, we're in the interest of streamlining deployment and getting this out there, we're going to rely on the experts. It's not CWS, it's the people that work at the wireless communication service providers who tell us what they need.
I just wanted to go back to your process with Eldon Farms. And I think it was at the meeting that you worked here, Mr. Sheridan. Apparently, you had engaged Eldon Farms prior to the approval of the Sperryville site, but that was not disclosed at the time that we vetted that application. Is that correct?
I don't.
I believe you made that statement at that meeting in particular.
I don't, I think what I said was that I didn't recall the exact time, but I know we started talking to Eldon Farms, I think it was in May of 2018. What I don't understand is the concern. If you go back and look at our application for Sperryville and at our PowerPoint, everything, we never said that tower is going to cover the entire breadth of 522.
No, but you proposed it as a standalone site.
What does that mean? I don't, I don't know what you mean.
That it was proposed to function by itself and not be a physical part of a network.
It does function by, that's one of the pieces of, what I'm having trouble communicating. Every, maybe, Jesse, you can, can you comment?
I really don't need to hear from anyone else. I do understand that Sperryville will function independently, but I'm saying that you sold that as a standalone site, but now you're hinging this application on the existence of that site.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
I think I understand, but we just view it differently. I really, I really don't need any more comment, but I do appreciate what you're saying. Thank you.
Well, if I may add, there's, I think we have been asking about the comprehensive nature of the plan and the pattern of it, so I think it's, I can appreciate that some of this request has been, you know, in response to some of our discussions about how does this fit together. I guess with respect to your comments about the, you know, our ability to request a propagation map or get into the technical standards, I totally agree with you, and I think that's why we're not doing that in any way. Unfortunately, that process sort of leads us to where we may find ourselves today, which is, it's, the only power we have is to look at the impacts visually of where you end up with all that calculus about cost. And I presume that even the question of, you know, getting fiber to a more remote place is ultimately a cost consideration. And I recognize that that is, that that is not our domain, and we are restricted from doing it. But at the end of the day, through this process, we've reached a point where we have a site, we have a design, we have a height, we have a tower, and we're looking at it, and we're considering its visual impact and trying to kind of consider it within the somewhat conflicting objectives of our comprehensive plan to provide service but also protect our views. And I would suggest that, to the extent that you're, that some of us are expressing opposition, it's on that basis that we're, that's where we are where we are. So I can understand that we're, you know, there's a lot that goes into this, but we're not trying to do anything important. Any other?
Well, I think we're trying to, 50 years ago, some very good people protected this county with some very good, a good comprehensive plan and some good zones. And our role is to continue that into the future. And we have a responsibility to do that. And it's a, it's a tough one, because there's arguments on both sides. And I know you had another release with, you mentioned, and then you have another release with Eldon, they designed, and then they changed their map, and then you ended up on this side. We're not privy to all that, we're interested in that. But we understand that it's a very narrow scope of what we can approve or disapprove of. The law doesn't give us much freedom, and so it's a, we're limited in what we can do. The, I think that comprehensive plan, the primary goal has always been to preserve the view shed in the county and to, that we are different. It doesn't say this, but we are different, and we like that. And it's an important aspect to the future of Red Oak Mountain, that it's okay to be different. As I said, we have EMS that wants the better coverage. We have schools want better coverage, parents want better coverage. And we're trying to find the solution that works the best for the county. We have two approvals right now for Boston, we have, I'm sorry, we have approval for Scrabble. There's a tower in Boston that is not even functioning yet. We have a tower in Sperryville that's not functioning yet. And it leaves us a bit confused as to, you know, what do we need at this point? How much have we accomplished so far? I don't know. So it's, but at this point, we have one application before us for a, for one tower that we have to recommend approval or recommend a back to the Board of Supervisors, and it's up to them to make a final pursuit. So I just kind of wanted to bring that together here a little bit, that we are recommending by, we're not a fine old say on this, but there are strong opinions and all directions. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I just very briefly make clear that I'm, I'm not trying, thank you for that. I'm not trying to get into your business decisions. You provide us with what you think is appropriate, and we trust your business decisions. You do what you think is best. I'm focusing, you know, for our part, really on the concealment and visibility, and not even the aesthetics so much as the visibility. And that's just, I guess, where my concern is. So I'm prepared to make a motion that, that based on the location height design, that it doesn't meet that it doesn't meet our... The minimum requirements of our comprehensive plan, and I can make a motion to that. Hope you like that.
And the recommendation would be to decline that basis?
Yes, I would say the location, height, and design that we... I would recommend that we recommend to the board supervisors that we deny this application based on the location, height, and design. The multiple they've suggested, not minimizing the visibility so as to preserve the beauty and protect the natural scene and historic resources of the site and is therefore inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of one and four under the Rappahannock County Code, Section 170-52J. This will create an adverse impact on tourism and property values and on the creation of a distracted and harmonious community in contradictions of Rappahannock Code, Section 170-108.1.484.
I assume you can... You've got that language written, perhaps you can... So, we have a motion before the...
I'll second it.
That motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that?
Did you want to get further, let's live on this?
No, but I am thinking about that.
There is no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, taking that as being aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, I think Ms. Summers suggesting we do a roll call, which is probably reasonable. I'll start. I vote aye.
Hold on. Hold on aye.
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 Thank you very much. I know this has not been an easy one, and I appreciate everyone sticking... If you'd like to make your exit, I'd personally be too, so quickly and quietly. I think you have a lot of other business to attend to tonight. If I could again ask the audience to please make their exit roll quietly so we can continue. I'm still having a big one. It's finally... It's a final mission, please. Could we... Quite like to continue with our business. Next item on the agenda is the text amendment to Article 1012. Sorry, Article 12 signs exemption of fire and rescue companies. Ms. Summers, if you mind bringing this up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In 2017, the Rappahannock County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association requested board supervisors to approve a text amendment to add volunteer fire and rescue companies as a listed entity exempted from submitting sign permit applications by adding the words, quote, "or fire and rescue companies," following the words "public agency" in the Rappahannock County Code 17094M. The Board affirmed the matters of the Planning Commission during their December 2017 regular meeting. In early 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed the request amendment that did not schedule a public hearing. At the last Planning Commission meeting of November 20th, the Commission voted six to zero over the public hearing and requested amendment for the December 18th meeting. Subsequent to the November 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the county administrator, myself, the zoning administrator, and the county attorney met to review and discuss the proposed ordinance amendment. During that meeting, staff concluded that the amendment requested by the association may exempt the fire and rescue companies for requiring a sign permit, but would not exempt them from the remainder of the article requirements specifically to include 170101 prohibited signs and 170107-1 lighting of signs. Without an exemption from these reference ordinance requirements, the sign installed by Amesville Volunteer Fire and Rescue would still not be permitted even with the requested ordinance amendment. Further, the zoning ordinance, as currently written, provides a pathway for special use permit or special exception application for use of an alternative form of sign elimination, such as clusters of internal LEDs. And restricting the frequency of sign message shown to be less than one for 60 minutes would eliminate concerns regarding the existing prohibition of animated signs. For these reasons, staff does not support the requested zoning ordinance amendment. Upon being informed of staff's concerns, the Board of Supervisors directed staff during their December 2019 regular meeting to work on a broader zoning ordinance amendment designed to permit by right electronic message board signs installed on properties of the county, school board, and volunteer fire and rescue companies. Work on this proposed amendment is underway.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Before I open the public hearing, I want to be clear. I know there's been a lot of different conversations about signs, the sign ordinance. There's a lot going on here. I'd like to remind everyone that the reason that we've kind of reached the point of this hearing is to sort of finish the business that we started 18 months ago when we were faced with a specific request to make a specific amendment to the ordinance. So, while there's a lot of discussion and a lot going on around this ordinance, including that work which has now been requested of staff by the board of supervisors, the matter before us this evening is fairly narrow. With that, I don't know, do we actually... Do we have an applicant for this?
Yes. Good evening, again, David Kunk, and I represent the Amesville Volunteer Fire and Rescue Service Department. Anyway. You know, I heard the staff report. I wasn't aware of until this today. And I heard the chairman's comments. And, you know, I keep hearing the board talk about the comprehensive plan, saying, "Oh, well, it's not perfect, but, you know, we can always change it later. We can always fix that part up later. We don't have to do it all at one time." And I just want to refresh the commission's recollection since I don't think there's a single person who said, "Maybe Mr. Light, maybe Mr. Byrd," who were on the commission when this started, of how we got to where we are with this particular amendment. My client, Amesville Fire Department, came in and applied to put up a sign pretty much the same as what's there now, what they recently installed. And they really couldn't get an answer, so then they were finally denied. And as a result of that, Mr. Ken Deckgriff and some other people came and had a meeting. This all happened at the time we had a change of zoning administrators and a change of county administrators. So, unfortunately, Ms. Summers wasn't... Well, fortunately or unfortunately, that's the case. So, don't let any of this splash on you, Michelle. She wasn't here when the initial decision or determination was made. And so, they sat down, the representatives of the fire association and the zoning administrator and the county administrator, I think, and the county attorney. And that's where the language that's before you tonight came from. We didn't dream it up. That's what they told us we needed to do. And the document, I think you've seen it, the last month's meeting of this, it's still floating around where it's handwritten in, the exemption. That wasn't our doing. That's what we were told to do. And so, here we are. I want to say a couple of other things about the staff report that I find really kind of, you know, disturbing. And that is, first of all, the fact that, well, now there's some kind of a more comprehensive plan or proposal to fix up more parts of it is very nice, but you can do that later. That should be without prejudice to this proposal. The second thing I want to point out is about the unfairness of the administration. And again, this isn't on Michelle because this didn't happen on her, or if any of it, I don't think happened on her watch. But there's internally... It's that right now, what they're talking about fixing up is the provision that says about the lighting of signs. And the lighting of signs says, if you have an externally lit sign, it has to be with, like, directional lights. So, that's like if you put, say, a big sign up on the wall of your building, regardless of the size of it, and then you want to light it up at night and you shine lights on it, the lights have to only shine at the sign in question. There's nothing in the ordinance that specifically says you can't have an LED sign or a message board sign or other signs. And the proof of the pudding is drive up and down to 11, starting at the Amesville Fire Department. Settles, right next door, has an internally lit sign. It's not an LED sign, but it's not lit up by little lights on the outside of the sign. It's got lights inside the sign. Better get a permit for that. Go down another half a mile, you got Matthews. They got a price sign for their gas. That's an LED sign, exactly the same sign as what Amesville got, just smaller. How that get up there? Drive down a little bit further, and you get out here to the Quickie Mart. I didn't skip any... Oh, wait, I did skip one. Early's Carpet has three, now, one, two, three internally lit signs. One for Karastan Carpets and one for Armstrong, and I forget what the other one says. But there's three great big signs standing up there.
I think we're getting a little far afield from the request for exemption. I don't know how compliance, potential act of compliance of other signs is relevant to the question of the exemption. So, if I could, I feel like you're getting kind of wound up, and I was hoping you could...
I'm not getting wound up.
Thank you.
Do I sound wound up?
No, but you're winding off.
You know, I'm getting paid to do my own thing.
I appreciate it.
Except I don't get paid for this. Anyway. A little bit further, you come to the Quickie Mart. They got an internally lit sign. So does Hillsdale have an internally lit sign. And so does the Quickie Mart. What's next? My favorite internally lit sign in the whole county, the school, the high school. And not only their internally lit LED sign of just what the staff report says shouldn't be allowed or wouldn't be allowed if you approved this, was put up under this very exact same exemption. And not only that, it's animated. It changes. I went down there and took pictures of it. You've all seen them. I took... I just stood there and went click, 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 every five seconds. Something changes every five seconds, so it's an animated sign. Amesville's not doing that. So, I'll move on, but the point is, it's very unfair. To first of all, tell people, "Here's the fix." And then when they finally get it to public hearing, it's not their fault it didn't come up for 18 months. Now you're saying, or essentially, you know, that the goal posts have been moved again, that, "Oh, well, even if you got that, and you don't have to get a permit, you're exempt from getting a permit, your sign still is going to be compliant, so you have to make some other change." What about the high school? Why aren't they going after them? Why aren't they telling them, "Hey, your sign's not compliant"? Because it didn't have a permit at all. It doesn't have a letter from anybody that has anything in writing to say it's not legal or it doesn't need to... It's exempt from the permit requirements. They just put it up. And it's animated, and it's still animated. So, it's in blatant violation of the ordinance. So, for all these reasons, I think that what's before you is the first step. If staff thinks it needs to be worked on some more, that's fine. They can do that when the commission gets around to it and the supervisors have given you some mandate to do that, just like they gave you the mandate for this thing that's before you tonight. The same board supervisors, the exact same board supervisors is the ones who sit, propose this amendment as the fix for the issue. And so, I just think it would be highly unfair to recommend anything but approval for this. And keep in mind that this is only going to exempt... There's only five fire companies. Berryville's already got an internally illuminated sign. I left that up on this. They've already got one. I don't think the other fire companies have the money because the sign is pretty expensive. It's $25,000 to set up that sign on. So, I don't think... It's really like there's something of these signs appearing everywhere in the county. I don't think Castleton's planning to put one up. I don't think Flynn Hill or Chester Gafford are planning to put one up, and that pretty much covers the waterfront. So, it'll keep for another two or three months if you want to make other exemptions. Amesville is not changing the message on their sign now. They never intended to. It's not blinking, it's not flashing, it's not any kind of traffic hazard. So, whatever it is about not changing it more than 60 minutes, they're complying with that and will undertake here and now to comply with that they've ever not complied with. So, it's not an animated sign. And in my opinion, if you read the language of the ordinance, there's nothing in there that says you cannot have an internally lit sign or anything that says you cannot have an LED sign with that kind of message on it. So, anyway, we ask that you pay us the exemption, and they'll be exempt from permits, and then everybody will be happy and live happily ever after.
Thank you for that wishful perspective. So, I appreciate the... Certainly appreciate the attention that's been given to potential compliance for several signs. I will take a brief leave since I think maybe... Mr. Byrd, you were on when we discussed this last time. Were you on?
I think so, yes.
Well, in any event, I recall, while we did not have a hearing, we did have a fairly robust conversation about the amendment amongst the commission as we ordinarily would for a preliminary review. And my view is today what it was then, what I communicated, which I felt was the sentiment. You know, we did agree to have a hearing, and I wish I had better records about why that didn't get scheduled, but it is what it is. So, we're here tonight on that request. And I feel the same way as now as I did then, that we should not be doing carve-outs of exemptions from our ordinance for different types of applicants. At the time, we tried to understand what the challenges and questions were, and the discussion was, "Well, we don't understand the ordinance. The ordinance isn't particularly clear to people administering it." Administering it, perhaps, were able to give an adequate explanation for the type of sign that was being proposed. I don't know those particulars, but I do know that that is... This is what was coming to send. It led to the discussion of, perhaps, this alternative solution of exempting the fire and rescue departments. I think we had some discussion, and I hope we have some discussion now. I think it's... It should give some special consideration for the important needs and important service provided by our fire and rescue department. My personal view is that that shouldn't extend to exempting them from the general ordinances that we require, especially for assignment, at least for most of its use. Doesn't seem directly related to the actual fire and rescue services being provided. But I get ahead a little bit. We do have a public hearing, and I think we've had it. You've done your bit. I guess I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter?
Here.
Jack Atkins, Jackson District. I'm here on behalf of Amesville Fire Company. I am president. I have at least 200 signatures on petitions that have been signed requesting to approve this amendment. Furthermore, it's my opinion, not the opinion of Amesville Fire Rescue, we don't need no permit anyway because we replaced the existing sign. It was internally lit. We advised by the county staff that no election permit was required and also no other permit was required because the foundation was there. We replaced the existing sign. Michelle, do you have the opportunity to bring up... Michelle, do you have the opportunity to bring up one seventy, one oh seven, one, B1, and read that to the public? And we need to get into twenty-first century. Marlene don't have a typewriter over there tonight, she is using her computer. We in the twenty-first century, we know we're not going to replace a sign that's not into twenty-first century, because you can't get the other type of signs anymore. They're all LED lit. I don't think I can see that good. Can somebody read it? The existing sign. It involves method of elimination of sign in the residential resource preservation subject, which method is listed before the effective date of section, make the tenure. Correct?
Correct. You're referring to B1, existing substance there.
That sign has been there since, one sign was there in seventies, and the other was placed in eighties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Phil Irwin, Fuddhill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to share just a couple of thoughts with you, at the risk of a rather unpopular span. The purpose of a sign, to me, is twofold. Number one is to identify something, and number two is to give directions on how to get there. And any other use of a sign as such is, shall we say, unnecessary, inappropriate, is advertising. May I suggest that the, the two signs that we have now that are in violation of our basic thoughts of, in the comprehensive plan, are totally ineffective. I have driven by, numerous times, the one in front of the high school, I've driven in front of the one in Amosville down twice at the dark, and I find those signs to be totally ineffective. I can't read them. If I did read them, I would be guilty of improper operation of a motor vehicle. My attention would be diverted. My biggest example of the excesses to which signs can be put are evidenced on Route 995 in Richmond, where the road goes like a huff roller coaster, the most dangerous part of the interstate highway system. Right there, three consecutive signs by LeMarre Company are television screens. They, they not only can change, you know, the, the color, change the wording, but they can project television programs, moving pictures. Now, this is inappropriate, adjacent to national highway, and it's especially inappropriate here in Rappahanna County, where we have all kinds of methods of advertising and sending messages that do not require a special sign. To light the thing after dark only increases the dangers of this type of sign. May I suggest that there's other ways of advertising a message than the use of signs, and the ones that we have are the worst possible examples of not only something that's inappropriate, but it's dangerous.
Thank you. Before we have the next commenter, I'm just gonna try once again to ask people to focus their comments on the exemption before us. I understand it's tempting to broaden it, but that really is the matter before us. Does anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Ron Ackerman from Jackson District. Let me pass these on, the numbers, and I'll get to that in a minute. First, I'm, I'm a little confused, I've written down some things that I want to speak about, but I got confused initially in that my understanding is that this sign, or this, excuse me, this change in the sign ordinance was requested by the Fire and Rescue Association. We've got a email, I believe in your board docs, from the secretary, Mr. Indentrist, from the Fire and Rescue Association requesting this. Yet tonight, the representative of the applicant is from the Amosville Fire Department. So I'm a little confused there in that where is the request coming from, or is it important? Maybe it's not important, but it's, I'm just a little confused at this point. The next, the next thing I'd like to talk about real quick is that what we're talking about here is, is a sign, and, and also, I want to preface this by saying, this has nothing to do with who is asking for the signs, and that this is not talking against the fire department, and what they do, which we all realize is a valuable service that we need. This has to do with a sign in front of the buildings that they operate out of, and that's what we're talking about. So I don't want to get confused in that, you know, you're, you're opposing the fire departments, because we're not. The question is, is, are these signs, do, do the fire departments, or the fire department, because there appears to be only one applying for it now, do they need this sign, or do they just want this sign? Is this sign going to help them put out a fire at your house, or provide you with medical service, emergency medical service when you need it? Another question is, why don't you see these signs in front of other fire and rescue associations? And, and since this has come up, and I've been driving around, I've had to go to Richmond a couple of times, and, and drive around the back roads, I've gone by a lot of volunteer fire departments. You don't see these signs in front of volunteer fire departments. I've seen, there's one in, there's a small one in Billtown, and they've got a portable one, I believe, that's looking for it. Other than that, in the surrounding areas around here, the fire and rescue, they don't have these signs. So, so is there a need, or did they just wanted it? I think that's something you need to consider. Another thing that, and it would be, basically, when you're talking about organizations, that's seven organizations, I believe, in the county, including Squareville Fire and Rescue. But also, at the same time, these signs exist in front of a number of churches in the county. The, the old textile sign that Amosville just took down, the backlit, done fluorescent signs. And if we make this change, we are going to be hard pressed when they come forward and say, we would like that same type of sign, because we, you know, we had, we had a sign similar to what they had, and now we would like that. So now you're talking about, we've got thirty-plus churches in the county, you've got seven fire and rescues, so you could be talking about close to forty of these signs throughout the county. There, there's that potential for that. I'm ready to know, it's, it's probably never would reach that number, but there is that potential, and that is what you're doing, is changing the ordinance. What other, I mean, what other exemptions, you know, because, quite honestly, the problem with, with the sign, and, and right now, they, with what I gave you tonight, I just took that prior to the meeting. The first photo is of the sign that exists right now, that has brought this to, you know, this room. And then the second one is a close-up shot of it. You come down the road, which you see is a large lighted mass of light, but you can't really read it. And then if you get closer, and my cheap computer didn't print out the color as well as it should, but that, tonight, is bright red. It's, I believe those signs are four by six, somewhere in that vicinity or whatever, but it's just a large lighted sign. And we, tonight, we've talked about the towers, and it's buchet, buchet, buchet. These signs, if they're put in, become part of the buchet. These signs, possibly, if you're up on the parkway, would be visible at night. And think about one of these signs, Amosville is, you know, it's commercial, not commercial, but it's semi-commercial or whatever, but going through Castleton, and coming upon what you have in front of you there, is that what we really want? And do we really need that? The, the information that, that the fire departments need to get out, and that, that Amosville, they choose their sign for traditionally, is bingo, dinners, the fair, it's, you know, it's fundraising, but it's advertising. But today, with all the social media we have, got the newspapers, got an online newspaper, there are multiple ways for them to get the word out without having to go to this extent. And this is something that, basically, you know, we worry about developers coming in and tearing the houses, because we'll look like Loudmun. Well, you go to Loudmun, that's where you find those signs. They're all over the place. So basically, we, we make this change, okay, we're starting to look like Loudmun. So these are the things you need to think about. We, you know, we can, we can actually go another correction, in that the way the ordinance reads right now, the county is exempted. Does the county need to be exempted from the sign ordinance? They've been exempted for, since it was written, and the only time it's been utilized, it was, you know, legal sign that was put up by the school system. We don't, you know, we don't need that. And we don't want a sign, like I just showed you, sitting out here in front of the courthouse. We don't want it in front of the administrator's office. We don't need these signs. I would recommend that you just eliminate the whole, that whole portion of it, and make the county actually have to obey the sign ordinance, and we won't have to worry about these things, because we don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Paige Moon, Jackson District. Sorry, Jack. I don't approve of this change at all. I don't think it's act, it's one bit necessary. What they did is they replaced a sign. That's all they did. And what, what's happened here is differential enforcement. For a long time, there's some reason why we seem to want to pick on Amosville Volunteer Fire Department. Yet there's a sign in Sperryville that got a, a violation notice, and we find our way to allow them to lay the hoop down, not keep raising the hoop up to jump through. We laid the hoop down on the ground. And that sign wasn't there before. It's a beautiful sign. So is Amosville's sign. It is valuable. And no, there are other lit signs, they've been by Sperryville Fire Department. Boy, that blinding would become down off the mountain, all right? My point is this, we have an enforcement problem, a differential enforcement problem. We don't need to change the ordinance. Well, yes, we do. We have a messed up ordinance. But besides that, not for this issue. We got into this issue because, for some stupid reason, we sent these people around in loops for two, three years, all right? Chasing all these things with whoever recommended this change, all right? Because at that time, when that was happening, truly, the county, not you, not him, all right? The county administration was after Amosville for a number of different reasons, and that's how this started. Just knock it off. Just get rid of the notice of violation. You might as well get rid of the one in Sperryville too. I mean, that's a nice sign. So is Amosville's, all right? I think it would be really nice if Washington had one of these, and not have to be sent through the hoops that Amosville did, all right? Castleton doesn't have the money to do this, Fuddhill doesn't have the money to do this, and Squareville Volunteer Fire Department is busy trying to go with it, they are not going to buy it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Some hate from people. I didn't even know signs were on the agenda, but I would say that I would not like to see any class of exemption. I am as concerned about the buchet when it comes to signs as I am when it comes to cell towers, and I, I don't think we should exempt. I don't know what kind of redress may be appropriate in the case that you have before you with Amosville. Maybe Amosville knows that I'm a good supporter of theirs. But I, and maybe there's nothing but LED signs available now. I would hate to think that we're going to have these glittery signs all over the county. I don't think that's going to enhance our appearance, and it's something that we should think about. Sounds like we need to suspend approval of any signs at the moment, and develop a good ordinance that really reflects what the general population would agree is appropriate. This, my view is my view, it may not be the main view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Wolers, Hampton District. I'll try to be brief. I'll start by saying that I'm a member of the EMT for that unit. The reason I'm an EMT for them is because I'm alive, because of the actions that you did four years ago to save my life. I had a cardiac event coming back from the client in East Africa, and my wife had called in, and at least one of the officers that's here tonight was part of that EMS crew that has helped save my life. So I don't do as much as I'd like to for them, but as long as I'm living in the county, I'm going to keep caring for them. But I will say that sign is, has been around in one shape or another for years. It displays vital information, even if it's something minor, like a handkerchief to the event, that helps pay for a lot of equipment, training, and ancillary funds that go to that organization. It may seem trivial, but a sign that alerts people of need for a blood drive doesn't sound like much until you need blood. A lot of my thunder was stolen by a Tony Tonic, but that's a good thing, though. But as he indicated, category from the front end of that sign is may use, which has an illuminated LED sign that nobody seems to have a problem with, that advertises the price of diesel fuel. Whether that, that's more important than a blood drive, I'll leave that to you. But I, I think this is a vital piece of community infrastructure and public safety information. I think it's an important asset to the community. As far as color schemes and font sizes, that's all programmable, so I don't see an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jamie Carter from Jackson District. Orton Grays here in Rappahanna County. Seen a lot of change over the years, and some of good, some of not so good. But what we're talking about here today is, I'd much rather be at my station right now training the nine members that are here representing our company tonight, than sitting here. Seem more often than not, we're having to fight with the county instead of work with the county because of, again, moving boundaries, moving rules and regulations throughout the years. But again, we've had an internally lit sign since the early nineteen nineties, okay? So we replaced an internally lit sign that had been out of service for almost a year and a half, almost two years now, because we couldn't get it repaired. and a half, almost two years now, because we couldn't get it repaired without a major overhaul, it was going to cost a lot of money. So instead of doing that, we jumped into the 21st century and replaced an existing sign with another sign. Just, again, when you're replacing your 1982 Buick, you're not going to go buy another 1982 Buick. So we're going to upgrade. Talk about the sign itself, some of the things that are possible with the sign. We can hook up to the state system so that we can get amber alerts and code red warnings put on the sign. Again, those are some things that are possibilities for the sign, but again, right now until we're able to fully use the sign, those things can't happen right now. Those are warnings that people could read when they're going up the road. Because as you know, cell service in Rapid County is spotty at best. Other uses, again, it helps attract new members and as Mr. Mackler said, Little Fork does have an LED sign in front of their station. They noticed a 20% increase in membership once they started using their LED sign to attract members. Again, that's one of the things we're going to use the sign for, is advertising for membership, which we, every volunteer fire department and rescue squad in this county desperately need. It also announces our fundraising events. The fundraising events that we hold pay for the fire apparatus, the fire stations, all the capital items that are in the fire and rescue departments in Rapid County are solely on the donations and the fundraising efforts of the volunteers. Again, public messages that we can give, public CPR classes. When we have a public CPR class, again, trying to get the newspaper to print everything sometimes is very hard because you get squeezed out by artists, other events that are going on in the county. So again, with those things. I've heard a lot about buchette. As far as buchette is concerned, how many lives are worth of buchette? We had somebody die in Rapid County because they didn't have cellphone service because we don't want a cellphone tower. They had to drive six miles to get a signal so that they could call 911, man bled to death before the ambulance got there. Again, buchette is a wonderful thing, but again, how many lives does it worth? And it comes down to, when I'm displaying a sign, are you slightly my free speech? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jackson District, James Wood, retired fire captain from Fairfax. Now, don't bring any of that with me except that you're bringing me the experience. I've seen a lot of stuff go on at Amosville and one thing I am very proud of, now that it's public here and I'm going to let you know, in 1984, I took over his treasure. My wife begged me to go help. And I said, no, I've had so many years up in Fairfax and so many years in Frankforton, I don't need anymore. So I took the treasure job. There were several people there nobody would take when they had an open house trying to get funds. I took over the treasure. First week, I wrote $1,700 worth of bad checks. $2,000 had been put in a wrong account by the volunteer chief and his sister-in-law. They put it in the bingo account. We got that straight. Okay, though, comes carnival time. I ask what we don't do for money for changing on. Oh, well, if I could do this, you'd get what, $190, I'm just kidding. I personally borrowed $2,000 to run the carnival in 1984. And you would not believe what these guys have got into treasure now and how hard they have worked. The only time that I came up here to do any talking or what have you was when our ex-county administrator and one of his employees at the landfill, we're going to put the cell tower on this property. It had been promised to Amosville Fire Department and I've raised hell. And we got it put at the fire department. And that's a very good income. And I would advise some people too, when you're doing this stuff with their cell towers, who's getting the money? It's not where it is, it's not the coverage, who's getting the money? So that's where it goes. From my little $2,000 to what is going on in this county, you've got to get your act together. This is the border supervisors as well as the rest of them. Get your act together in this county. You need to straighten your act up. For instance, do you still own the Arling building? Or has that been sold? Arling building, whatever?
Sir, it's been sold, but we're, we're pretty far. Our hearing tonight is on the exemption of the ordinance. I appreciate your, all your commentative contributions, but the I.D. plan really isn't the subject of tonight's hearing.
Okay. Can I go on just a little bit further?
Please, if you try to wrap it up and try to state what the point of the hearing is.
Okay. The, the enforcement of the law. That's the thing. If you come down my street, you go around the old building that the county did own and just see the message around that building, we need some enforcement. If you're going to make rules and laws, less enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, sir. Just quickly.
Tim Jones, Jackson District. Back in 2015, I had, was in deer hunting accident back in my property and broke my femur and I couldn't get out. Amosville Fire came, pulled me out of the woods 45, 50 minutes later, took me to the hospital. It was pretty bad. On the way to the hospital, I talked to a gentleman. I said, how can I help you guys? They said, be a member. I became a member. I love it. They're a fantastic group and I'll do anything they ask me to do. This sign is advertisement for membership, also advertisement for bringing in fundraisers to help us buy equipment and put me through EMT training, which I'm going through now. I want to be a pilgrim in the community. I want to help the community all I can. We need members and if we have to advertise through this sign, which is drawing less wattage, which is helping the power grid, I think that's what we need to do is, is give them a special permit to have that sign and attract new members because we could get strapped sometimes on calls where we're shorthanded. We need new people and this is the perfect way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak?
Tom Artgen Denquist and Secretary of the Fire and Rescue Association, as well as Vice President for Amosville Fire and Rescue. Just to reiterate a couple of things before I get into, one of the things that I did want to bring to your attention, and that is that, as Jack mentioned, this is not a new sign. It was, granted, it is new because of the nature of the beast, but it's a replacement. And most of the precepts that are in the ordinance, and I think as Dave Honic mentioned, there's probably about 40 or 50 properties around the county where there are signs that are clearly in violation of the ordinance. And he alluded to several of them. The county administration's office, for example, has an animated sign where they put out the flag that says open. It's my understanding is that whether the sign is animated electrically or whether it's animated by wind, it is an animated sign. It's also about billboards west of Sperryville by the Litray Caverns. They've been there for years and years and years. My concern is, and the reason I presented the letter on behalf of the Fire Rescue Association is because I don't want to see what we're going through now with Amosville to happen to Sperryville Fire, Sperryville Rescue Squad and the other counties within the company, within the county. I just assume get this thing ironed out to the benefit of all of these fire and rescue companies. By the same token, it concerns me that there, as I said, there has been what we feel to be selective enforcement, when you've got all of these other businesses and such that are advertising even, as I said, with an animated flag, a sign which is a flag. But the other thing that I want to bring to your attention is that everyone in this room, we are protecting your life and your property. And as was alluded to, yes, Amosville has been a target to a certain extent. But the other thing is that this is the only county, the only jurisdiction in this part of Virginia where all the fire rescue services are all volunteer, which means that when the pagers go off and the sirens sound, we feel a personal responsibility to respond to your emergency. By the same token, there is nothing that anybody can do if we decide not to respond to a particular address. We're not doing it intentionally, we're not doing it out of spite, but as volunteers, this is the only organizations, all of them, which is saving this county millions of dollars every single year. There have been studies done to determine how much it would cost to have three paid people, you'd need at least three covering for days off and suffices and illnesses and so on. The cost of that is millions by the time you talk about equipment, vehicles, uniforms, salary, benefits and so on and so forth. This county cannot afford that kind of public safety service. We don't have the tax benefit and the tax base to support it. It just really irritates me to no end. And I've been doing fire and rescue this coming July for 58 years. I started when I was 16. It irritates me that to know that when I get up at 6 o'clock or 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock in the morning and it's snubbing house, or it's 90 degrees on a summer afternoon, that I'm going out to the service of my fellow citizens, visitors, businesses in the county and knowing that we have to jump through, as was alluded to, hoops like this. We're here to serve you. We're not being paid. Our equipment is bought and paid for, the county does not pay for that. Yes, you do pay for a lot of our expenses, I won't deny that. And we would be sorely pressed if we didn't do that. But every company in this county is holding fundraisers in order to supply the first-class service, the first-class equipment that you know, boy, you're entitled to, but you deserve it. And so it just really annoys me to no end and realize that we have to jump through hoops like this. Yes, I don't want to see Rapid County look like Fairfax when it comes to lighting at night. And if necessary, we can shut because we know that there's not much traffic on 2/11 after 9 o'clock at night. We can make arrangements to shut that sign off at night if we're concerned about the issue of dark skies and so on and so forth. But for the things that we have, the people who travel on Route 21, especially during tourist season, and they see what's going on here, I think it's very important for us to have the ability, we're not advertising other than we need your help. We have a fund drive going on. That's what the sign says right at this particular moment. Our fund drive is going on and that's what we use so that the county doesn't have to pay for some of this stuff, which again falls on our tax bills. And God knows our tax bills are high. So all I'm asking for is for the planning commission and the border supervisors to give us a little support. We're not asking for a lot. We just want to know that we are being supported. And we're asking that if we don't want to go within a text amendment or something, that there ought to be some provision which allows us to be able to provide the services that you all need and you all deserve. And for that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is George Lee. I'm from Hampton District. I ain't got nothing to do with the Far House, but I do help them out on carnival time, me and my wife. I think the sign's a big thing, I really do, because it tells a lot of stuff that's going on at the Far House. Like the other day, I don't like needles and we got a couple of guys that work on needles. Some guy come in last week and said they're having a blood drive at Amosville Far House. So there's people watching the sign every day. I go by three times a day and it's always got something different on it. And I think it's good advertising. It's a whole lot better than the one we had at the high school because you actually, the letters of this tall, you actually got to pull the parking lot to read it. I don't understand why they did that. I just don't understand. But the one that happened in Amosville, I mean, they've got good letters, everybody can read it and, you know, it's a good thing to see. So I think, I don't see nothing wrong with the sign. I think we ought to keep it. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
It's actually just a very brief comment, and that is that there's been information thrown out about the signs and the legalities or the illegalities or whatever. Perhaps Michelle could interject and explain because there's a lot of confusion on that which makes this issue.
Yeah, I think, again, I'd like to go back to what I said at the outset, that the matter before us tonight is the text amendment. That is the matter that was put forward for a hearing and that is what we're here to consider. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before I close the public hearing? No, I think you all. And I'd like to close the public hearing. Well, I've already had some of my comments. Why don't I go down to the other end of the table and start with you?
I find myself in a very difficult and conflicted place. I think that we're dealing with this situation because of inaction by the county itself and that the original application by the fire department came before this commission at least three years ago. I'm happy to be corrected, but it was quite a while ago and since then, nothing has happened. And this is a reflection on the county and it seems that we need to be able to respond quicker and more effectively than we have. That being so, I do feel that the, there needs to be a sign ordinance. It ought to be generally arrived at with the welfare and the opinion of the county generally involved. And it would seem to me that in this particular situation, it would be worth trying to accommodate the Amosville Fire Department and create a sign ordinance that from now on would be enforced and used by the rest of the county. This is, it seems that this is not, that both of those accomplishments, accommodating the fire department and having a strong and useful ordinance can both exist at the same time. Thank you.
Could I ask you to clarify, when you refer to the application, are you referring to the request for this exemption or are you referring to an earlier application?
It was the, it was the request for the, which came before this board.
Eighteen months ago, April 2018. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Ms. Dishi.
I guess I just have a couple of questions, probably from Michelle maybe, is so if this, without this ordinance change, the situation is that they have to come in and apply for a special use permit or special exception or?
Either or.
Either or. Either or. And were they denied? Did the county deny? I wasn't here at that time, I mean, I was involved at that time, so was the situation that they were denied a permit?
Denied what?
Did they apply for a permit and were denied it, or?
They have applied for a permit and then discussions were held. I don't know that official denial was ever, I have to look back through the.
I don't recall an application for a permit coming before this commission. I could be, show to be wrong if it were significantly earlier than the request for exemption. But again, that's only just my recollection.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to hear what others have to say since I'm the one on this. Let me, it's my turn, I guess. It seems to me this text amendment came before us. I wasn't on this commission at the time, most of us weren't. However it happened, the ball got dropped on the text amendment and changes were made. There were a lot of changes in personnel during that time, which I think accounts for some of the inconsistencies in moving this forward as well. All that being said, I think this commission needs to move this forward to the board supervisors with a suggestion for approval or a recommendation for approval, because it's a first step in a good faith process with Amosville Fire Department. It troubles me that the ball was dropped, it doesn't really matter to me who dropped it, and it went up for long enough that it should have been rectified before now. And so while I appreciate staff's recommendations that there are other details that could be dialed in, I think the expedient cure at hand is what we need to do as a county as a measure of good faith, and that's what I would hope that we would pursue this evening.
Okay. There's no question that the fire departments are critical to this county, absolutely, and that their work is above and beyond fantastic. I mean, we, we, I've been helped by the fire department, by the rescue squads, a lot of those people have, and my wife has, so I know what it means. And I want to be clear that the, there's a little confusion in the way this was presented, I think, but this is not about an enforcement of the sign, taking the sign away, this has got nothing to do with that. This is about whether or not an organization, any organization, should be completely exempt from the sign ordinance. That's the only thing that we are considering. We're not considering enforcement, we're not talking about making a case against anybody. We're here to, to, to recommend whether or not an organization in this county should be exempt from an ordinance in the county. There was an interesting article the other day by Bill Wester, who was the head of FBI and head of CIA for many years' age, and he said, "The rule of law brings order, and order it brings the rule of law." And you've got to have order in a county, and you've got to have regulations. There's no reason that the fire department can't have a sign like they want as long as it's within regulations. And the, I appreciate the passion behind the, behind the members of the fire department within them, and it's, you guys are great. I have concerns about just allowing any organization to just do anything it wants, which is what this, what we're being asked to look at here, is to say we're exempting the fire departments from any sign ordinance. That's what we're talking about, is should they be completely exempt? And I don't have a big problem with the sign at Amosville, I really don't. But the, I mean, I believe in the dark skies, I think it'd be nice if it was cut off late at night, I don't see, I don't have that much traffic on the road, but that's neither here nor there. Without some kind of regulation, in 10 years, 20 years, it might, it will be Amosville, it might be some other department that says, you know, we want to put a 25-foot billboard up that, like they have down in, as you go down the Frederick's Park, you see that one that flashes and it changes, and it flashes and it changes, it's got some guy's face on it, then a lawyer, you know, and it's got somebody else on it, and it's got another statement, and that's what could happen in 20 years from now, or 30 years from now. And the idea is that we're trying to have some clear and good regulations that allow people to have signs that they need without just totally throwing the ball up and saying, "Do whatever you want." There's, I know that the county, that the fire department can apply for a sign, for this very sign, and work through a permit process. So it's not, it's not about the sign, it's about whether or not we're going to have control of some kind throughout this, because once you give it up, you're going to give it up some more, and before somebody else is going to want it for long, you have no control at all. And that's, I don't think that's what we really want. I think we want the fire departments to do wonderful good, I think we want them to survive, I think we want them to be able to raise money, and I think the sign could probably be, you know, is probably not going to be a big problem if they go through the permitting process and just get the, so I think we have to be careful about not just saying, "Okay, do whatever you want," because you guys are wonderful. It might be somebody will come in later and say, "Hey, you've done this, I should have it too, I'm a nonprofit, whatever I am, and I'm going to put up a big sign with my picture on it." You know, so we just want to be careful about that, that's all, I'm saying, we want to be careful about what we permit anybody to do, that's all. Especially realtors. Exactly.
I would just say, Mr. Coors, respectfully, you're the one that's been working on the sign ordinance. So if you have those concerns, I mean, we can address them when we adopt the sign ordinance that you're revising.
Yes.
So, but that's not a reason not to do this tonight.
Well, you're, that's, the sign ordinance has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight, tonight has to do with exempting from the sign ordinance.
Well, we could revisit this at that time, if you were satisfied. I mean, that's what staff is saying as well, is that we can revisit and dial it in of this, but there's no reason that we can't do this tonight and do that also.
I don't think that you can, respectfully, I don't think that you can, I'll say that you're exempt and then take it back.
That's exactly what the staff report says.
I don't believe that's what it says. I think it says that.
They're working to dial in language.
Right, but they're not saying, "Go ahead and approve this." They're recommending not to approve it until the language is dialed in and then the county...
If the science department may, may on this, please. A couple of things, again, the interpretation from our council is that, well, what is before us tonight would only exempt them from the permit process, it would not exempt them from the requirements, so strictly speaking, acting on this tonight does nothing about their compliance status with the existing ordinance. A matter of expedience, the sign is up, right? I mean, you know, nothing we're going to do tonight is going to change whether the site gets, the sign gets put up or not, and so, you know, we're, this is, you know, I, I am the first to admit that, you know, vision of bond to this point, but I will also say, we've been in the same circle, because there's never been a specific request that I've seen about how to comply with the ordinance, how to get a permit, you know, what we want. The only thing that's come before this, this body is the request to be exempted, and I feel the same way tonight that I did then, because that is not the solution to this problem, and it pains me to, to not be able to just go toe with fire and rescue, it's the worst thing we ever have to do. I can't tell you guys how thankful I am, how respectful I am for the wonderful work that you do, and I agree with everything that was said about the lifesaving importance of it. But I go back to the fact that the sign is up, we need to deal with it. I can't address tonight why the path of it being a replacement sign is before us, that's not the question that's, that's here tonight, but that is, I think, an administrative matter that is, that is worthy of thought. But the sign's up, the amendment before us that's been advertised will not change the compliance state of the sign, so I do not support making this text change.
It may not support, it may not change the compliance, but it may change the enforcement, and that does show a path to compliance.
Could you elaborate on that?
Well, it's, you know, if the first step is getting the sign exempted, then, then we'll work through the lighting issue. You know, there's, there's the two layers of the issue, you know, as far as I'm aware.
Oh, so, so they were still not exempted?
And plus, this is, this is the remedy that staff recommended.
That I don't agree with, in fact, it takes a specific...
But David Dameron, back in the time that this was initially brought forward, these, this handwriting, as I understand it, are the changes that David Dameron recommended in order to accomplish the sign that exists today.
That, I don't know that to be factually to our fault, but that's not how it was, that's not how it was presented. It was presented as, you know, there was confusion around this thing, here's, here's one way to get out of it, let's just exempt them from the requirements, and I don't know who's, you know, I'm not going to comment on whose idea it was, but it was certainly never presented as a, as a recommendation for dealing with this. In fact, the recommendations that we've gotten at every step of the way have been, we don't need to do this to address this sign, there's a special exception process, there's a special permit process, there, there are all these things. This is a, maybe an expedient, but it's a very, it's a very broad and sweeping, and I say, to the extent that it sets a precedent, dangerous to, to do a carve-out. It's just, to, because there's, someone's having trouble navigating a regulation, to simply say, "Well, let's just exempt them from it," is, I just don't think that's, that's the, that is the, you know, that's our, dispensing our responsibility in this, in this matter. And, and I say that painfully with respect to, you know, the fact that this has, you know, we do have other work to do on the sign ordinance, we've got a lot of backed-up ordinance work to do, but I think that does not change my view of this specific question for us.
I'm in agreement, but I think it's a mistake to just exempt anyone from the ordinance. I don't even think the, the government should be exempt from it myself, you know, why should they be exempt from the ordinance that they support?
Look, to be clear, the, the language in the paragraph, and I'll admit also that this is a fairly fresh reading of this, is that you're only exempt from the permit requirement to get the permit, you're not, this doesn't actually exempt you from all of the other requirements of the ordinance. So that's my point, that this really isn't doing anything, because I understand it from the, from the legal read of our county attorney, it's not doing anything with respect to the, the compliance matter of whether the sign does or doesn't fit, comply with the other parts of the ordinance.
We would like a, a bit of a reality check from staff on this, or sort of what this says, perhaps.
I mean, we have a board in the packet. I mean, I think I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and recommend the approval of this text amendment to the board supervisors at their next available meeting, pending the notice that's required.
Okay, thank you. We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I, I'm willing to give a second for the purposes of discussion, I, I, sorry, I, I'm willing to give a second.
We have a motion made and seconded, further discussion?
If I, if I may just say, I'm hearing this kind of cold, you know, I wasn't present for any of this, and I'm hearing this, two separate things, I'm hearing concern that there's been disproportionate treatment of, of a fire company, which obviously, I can't imagine any of us being happy to hear about that, and I hear that they're, they're, it's not entirely clear to me from the information that's been presented, whether there was an application for a permit, or it was, or it was pushed aside, or they didn't feel they got the right treatment.
This is the remedy that staff recommended. I would go to those meetings.
So what I, my point is, that sounds like one issue, the second issue sounds to me is should we amend an ordinance? And that I'm having a little trouble with, I have to admit, on first glance here, just because I don't see a basis for exempting a fire and rescue company for whatever amount of good they do and not exempting other people. I don't know where that stops, and I don't, I don't, I don't feel there's been a basis established for a need for the fire and rescue companies to be exempted from the ordinance. That's my only question here, I, I don't know why they should be exempted and not nonprofits, or...
Well, why would a school be exempted and not fire and rescue?
I don't, the, the only, I can see why a public agency might be exempted because, first of all, I mean, we are a public agency, a private south for, for a permit, but second of all, presumably, a public agency, people have recourse to their government through their elected officials or their tax pay process, and so public agencies are often exempted from permit requirements.
But the school has a special relationship with the county, that, that's not on county property, that's on school property is where the sign is. And so we have also a special relationship with our fire and rescue, as we recognize in our fire and rescue services agreement, that we confirmed at the beginning of my term of board supervisors. You know, we do have a very in-depth, understanding, formalized agreements with our fire and rescue services that is different from just about any other, I mean, I can't think of anything else in the county that exists that we have a, a formalized agreement with, that, you know, we're responsible for certain things, they're responsible for certain things, and, and we have to hold up to it. Part of it is supporting them in tangible and intangible ways.
And I think we do support them, but I don't think that changing an ordinance which might reflect on future things in the county that may cause other people to become exempt is a correct way to go about it.
So just one point, I believe that the basis of the school's perceived exemption for not having to come in for a permit was the language here that they are a government, what is it, say?
Public agency.
A public, a public agency. That was the basis, and that was the authority that allowed them to not get the permit. I think it's a fair and valid question as to whether they should be found in, out of compliance with the other parts of the regulation despite not having to come in for the permit, but again, that's not really the matter before us tonight. So we do have a, a motion before us duly made and seconded, is there further discussion?
I would just say I hesitate to stick up because I feel as informed as you all are, but I, I, I feel they'd be discontent, I'm just not quite sure I see the, the remedy to, to the problem.
Thank you, I believe that, that kind of represents my view of this as well. We're going to talk about, you know, dimness or other timing of one of these things, all of that goes away. All of that goes away if we proceed with this exemption that removes them from, from requirement, at least for the permit, although, again, I have to say, according to the, to the legal opinion by our county attorney, this does not exempt them from any of the other requirements. It just means that they're sort of responsible for themselves without having gone through the permit process to demonstrate compliance with the other sections of the ordinance. So, again, I, I believe, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that's pretty clear from the legal opinion that we've gotten, that this only addresses their compliance task with respect to the permit.
That seems curious, because if they don't need a permit, it would seem that would by itself mean that they didn't have to be bound by the ordinance.
Yeah, I think the, I think the issue is, if you look at the wording, the public agency, and it goes back to the point from Miss Ishi made, that it is because it's the public agency that is respons, or it is the public body that is responsible for, you know, receiving and reviewing the application, that they often are exempt from requirements and have, you know, if you will, kind of a, a special trust that they would otherwise comply with the ordinance. Now, again, that may not have complied, that may not have extended to the, to the, you know, to the school, in the case of, of this, where they didn't get the permit and, you know, maybe we haven't told them on the more general compliance. But I believe, and again, he's not here, I, I refer only to the same language that we all have in the packet, but I think it's pretty clear in that, in that legal opinion that, that that is, in fact, the interpretation, and I'm not qualified to repeat that. Does everyone have the language, is everyone familiar with the language I'm referring to? You had that report, that's in place, some report. The staff reports there is reference to the, the box. So, the, the amendment requested by the RCVFRA may exempt fire and rescue companies from requiring a signed permit, but would not exempt them from the remainder of Article 12 requirements, specifically including Sections 170-101 prohibited signs and 1Sec 70-1071 lighting of signs. Without an exemption from these referenced ordinance requirements, the sign installed by the Innsville Volunteer Fire and Rescue would still not be permitted even with the requested ordinance met. That is the plain language that I'm referring to in my observation, that this doesn't really address the, the compliance issue in the current sign, which I would, again, remind you, already exists and presumably is already providing whatever service Innsville hopes to get from the sign.
There's no further discussion. I call for a question.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion before us to recommend approval of the text amendment as written. And let's do a whole poll, but, Mr. Bird?
I'm not, the text amendment is to give a...
So the text amendment is to recommend approval. Can you scroll up to the language? What currently reads, what you got here? Okay. What currently reads, "Any informational directional sign or historical marker directed by a public agency," which may include signs providing direction, et cetera, to commercial districts for the types of activities, et cetera.
Following the words "public agency," would be add for fire and rescue.
Yeah, I was trying to get to the, trying to get to what that implies, and that it's not in that section that actually comes, it's not enough of the statute. So, right now, those bodies that I just described, where's the part that says what they're, what they're not, what they're not...
But isn't the idea of a permit to decide whether or not the sign accommodates the requirements? What is a permit about if it doesn't do that? I, I mean, you're saying you don't have to have a permit, but you have to abide by all of the restrictions, and if you don't need a permit, you wouldn't have to abide by the restrictions. Because the permit is what decides if you abide, or not abide by.
Not necessarily. It's a way of getting kind of recognition of what you're proposing in beats of department, but we have other ordinances, lighting ordinances, noise ordinances, that don't, that don't require permits. They're, they're enforceable on their own authority without necessarily getting a permit. And that's what, that's what our county attorney is telling us is it, is happening here.
You know, county attorney is recommending that we not require it.
Yes. But to be clear, these are, this is the part, "No such permit shall be required for," and here's a list of things that don't require permits. Signs of continued government body, memorial tablets or signs of historic markers, these are the list of things, these are the list of activities that don't require permits. And then you get down to M, and that, M is referring to informational directional signs or historical markers directed by a public agency, and the proposed language would insert "or" fire and rescue departments, I believe is, are the three words. So it would exempt them from the requirements of the permit, along with these other listed exemptions.
Yeah, like realtors.
Please, challenging enough, I appreciate publicly remaining.
I mean, I, I believe that provision is, as being the kind of signs you see, you know, the, the public agency puts up and says, you know, five miles to Little Washington or, it could be more if it's true.
Well, that is, that is what it was, I believe that is its original intent, but what I'm trying to clarify is what's before, inserting those three words after a public file. And I believe that is the, the motion that is before us, is to recommend approval of that text edit to that provision of M. Am I correct about your motion?
Correct.
And I believe, Ms. Ishi, you seconded. So what we are, what we are about to vote to do would be to modify that language to add to that exemption, fire and rescue department. Is that sufficiently clear to you?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. DeBert, how do you vote?
I, yes, I, I.
Ms. Ishi.
I'm going to have to vote nay on this. Aye.
On the advice of council and the staff, I have to vote nay.
And I also vote no. Motion, motion fails. So, is there a, I guess, is there a question here as to another way to move this?
Yeah, it's not a resolution. Somebody needs to make an alter question.
I make a motion with all the vice and county attorney and staff that this modification to zone, to zone not be overturned.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
I'm going to ensure that. A move that amendment requested by RCVFRA to exempt fire and rescue companies from requiring a signed permit, not be overturned.
And I will second that motion. Further discussion? I think what we're essentially doing is really acting narrowly. We're not taking any kind of position on other remedies or other ways of going about this. We're simply saying, this proposed fix that's before us tonight is not something we recommend approve.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? If not, Ms. DeBert? Ms. Ishi?
Aye. Nay?
And I also vote aye. Motion carries. We will pass that recommendation on to the supervisors. Thank you all for your consideration. Again, I thank the public and, you know, with all the respect to the, to the fire and rescue. I'll take a bit of recess, buy the break, if everybody wants to leave. We can do five minutes. Next item on our agenda is a preliminary review of special exception number 10-2 to risk and strategic management for a remanda to a special exception as enumerated, to allow for additional training fees. Ms. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. RSN Strategic Risk and Strategic Management OC, this is a preliminary here for them. Mr. Blight is the COO, and he is still an advocate. They apply for amendment to their current special exception permit, number 180504 for private schools. The property is located on Surgeon Lane.
Sorry, Craig.
Tax note number 22-28M. The property is agricultural with 84 acres in size. The applicants provide for a life-saving situation training on the property. An amendment to their current permit is being requested to allow for a training of five days a week, with no limitation to the number of training sessions per month, which was put on their original permit, which is included within the packet. Staff has reached out to both FDOD and Health Departments, both on December the 5th of this month, and no comments have been submitted back for the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Again, this evening, just to remind folks, we are not here for a hearing of the move. I, I think that the decision before us tonight is that we are inclined to understand, ask questions about the application, and to, to move it forward in some manner, including whether we would schedule a... I believe the application is due before us. I had, there were a couple of items from the application packet that were a little bit confusing to me, so maybe we could start with just clarifying those. I know there was some discussion around camping in some of the commentary, but I understand, and I hope everyone, hope I'm right, that everyone else realizes, the application no longer has that request in it. So that was kind of the end there. And the application is here, Mr. Blight, with a, with a plea to ask you to focus on things that are not already in the application. If there's anything you'd like to add or clarify, please, please do.
I'll keep, I'll keep it very quick. We, we've only actually used about 60% of our training days, but we have to cancel training because they tend to budge in the nicer weather, so we turn away, to respect compliance. Most of our courses were allowed to about 30 people. We've been running much smaller courses, so they're actually quite condensed, in size about 10, 12 normally in size. Originally, there were five go-rangers in a local area. There's not been a complaint about shooting, from what I understand, for like 10 years. There's actually two go-rangers in between us and many of the, the neighbors as well. So our noise is very short, very quiet, and there's a lot of other shooting in the immediate area. We've had no complaints against us. There was a couple of commentary, comments in February, which was clear enough. We've got emails back from people saying that we were not causing a problem since that point, so we've not actually had any complaints.
Mr. Blight, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I feel like you're starting to kind of read through your application. We have the application.
Okay.
If there's anything that you'd like to add to or depart from in your application, that's really what we'd like to hear.
So, yeah, so, so what we're trying to do is basically work like some of the other businesses on that specific way, allowing, being allowed to work from the 7:30 in the morning to about 5:30 in the evening. We probably won't use that five days a week, highly improbable, however, it will allow us to do a bit more in terms of contributing to the local economy. We've already committed $840,000 into the community in the period of 18 months, oh, sorry, 12 months. And we anticipate doing a lot more. We're being asked by the World Bank to basically run a couple of courses for them. We'll probably have to decline, and we're constrained, as we are currently with the number of training days, and that may be an impact to the economy as well, because we can put more money into the local economy.
So, thank you. So in addition to the move from three days per month to five days per week without a limit per month, there's also a request to expand the hours of operation. Is that...
No.
No, okay, so that's not a request?
No.
Because I saw there were some different hour ranges in some of the materials. So the only thing that's being requested to change are the allowable training days.
No weekends, no holidays, just standard...
So instead of the current restriction for, it's a little bit complicated with three per month with not on weekends, they're asking to go to an unlimited five days per week during, during, that, just trying to zero in on what the request to change is. Thank you for that, Mr. Blight. Rick, I'm sorry, I believe this is in, is this Ms. DeBert?
Yes.
Do you like to start us off?
There's one, are there some questions for Mr. Blight?
Or, you know, or points of discussion for the rest. But, yeah, I think that would be a good question, certainly.
So, I guess, Mr. Blight, you've done this for almost a year?
Since October of last year.
And I know there were some, some complaints, but you seem to have resolved many of those, or most of those, or all of them, I don't know.
There was one complaint about noise, which we immediately resolved the same day, followed up multiple times, and then we received an email saying it wasn't a problem.
And, and you're talking about using half caps, and I saw somewhere here that you equated that to the sound of an electric toothbrush.
Well, according to noise statistics that we got off the internet, so that was a third-party evaluation in terms of landmine weapons, then yes, because the decibel level, what we've actually done is, is even reduced down from 716 blags to 506, which means you don't actually need to have hearing protection, because they don't damage your eardrums, which shows how quiet they can be.
The, and I guess my concern is that you're, you're running a business in an agricultural area, and you're asking for a pretty substantial expansion of that business. And I'm, I guess I have some concerns about, about noise and about how many people would be there, and I just don't, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little perplexed about how to deal with this, you know? It's a, it's a pretty big change.
Bearing in mind, and I appreciate your concern, how actual physical visibility is approximately 10 minutes in a day. So it takes five minutes to drive up the lane, go into our land, disappear, and then leave at the end of the day. So in terms of actual traffic, it's very limited, because we only have a couple of vehicles. We're on the road for about 10 minutes, and then no one sees us, and the noise effects are very short-lived as well, so it's not like continuing going by the range. It's short, burst, stop. It's an outbreak, a couple of seconds, an outbreak, and that's how it goes. So we're not really visible, we're, we're not impacting travel or road movement, and it's very small groups, less than 30 typically, about 10 or 12. So very small impacts on the, for the community.
And I see you have some letters, mostly from people who... And I see you have some letters, mostly from people who do business with us.
Not necessarily. We've got four families who have committed letters. Another two said they don't have a problem on the lane, and that's the vast majority. And we've also got, so they're the neighbors that we submitted. The Anderson family, they have three neighbors on the property because there's a father-son conflict. And then one of the Stevens, who is opposite, that's immediately opposite. We've spoken to the neighbors who live immediately opposite, just bought property about three months ago, I think, and they have no problems at all. And then we spoke to her property, he was just on the road and he has no issues. He's actually got a ranger on his land as well. So there's only two families that understand who may have some level of concern like this.
And when you're out there, you're allowing people to enter the shooting range?
All the neighbors hunt on the land if they want to hunt. I've let the neighbors shoot if they want to shoot on the range because there's a pre-constructed 300-foot range. I've let the home club go through, they have unrestricted rights of access, we're not trained. And I also let the local horse racing folks go through when they do the races.
So what's being shot in the range?
Sorry, the 300-foot range? Yeah, so that's, that's why I mean, let the immediate neighbors, and I mean the junior neighbors, go target shooting. So that's a personal.
And what are they shooting, I mean, they?
Presumably handguns or rifles. But that's, that's a personal use of the business. We may know money out of that, we're just speaking to neighbors.
That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Smith.
I don't really have any comments on the application. I remember this application from the first time it came through. Doesn't seem like there's any changes to the site plan, correct? It's just extended hours of operation?
We're still staying at least 800 feet from any property boundaries of noise, so we're making sure there's big distance vegetation. We offered to do noise testing with all the neighbors. No one took us up on it. So we even offered to say, well, stand on your property and make a noise so we can leave it further away if there's an issue, but no one offered to engage us on that.
And I think, if I remember correctly, you went to two sites before you ended up at this final.
Yeah, we went through a number, we were recommended to find a large plot that had lots of vegetation to block the sound and visibility.
And it seems to have worked out that it's an isolated area. It's not really impacting anybody's quality of life there. I don't really have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Ishi.
I wasn't hearing this was approved. I see that we have correspondence from two neighbors who have raised concerns with us. I don't, I don't know if you've seen this correspondence, but one of them claims that the noise is much higher than what you're claiming and that you're, that's not the half-charged light details or not the noise simulators that you're claiming. So I don't know, are you aware of those concerns?
One of the neighbors that I'm aware of only raised concerns when we asked for the change of the exception, and I had an email here from them on 14th of February that counters that subsequent statement, where they actually said, "It's no noisier than normal range work." And they said it wasn't a problem with sound. So that complaint only originated when we asked for the change of the exception. There was zero complaints after the 14th of February from that particular person.
I'm remembering, reading through the letter, I believe she said that you'd had resolved some concerns, but they still appear to have ongoing concerns. Again, I don't, I don't know.
That's not true. We, I stood on the property, we did the noise test together. Immediately after the complaint on the 14th of February, they said that's fine. I then followed up multiple times, often to do sound tests. And then they sent this email saying that there was no issues at all with the sound. So I think this, this subsequent statement has originated only because we asked for more days on the training site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bird. It seems to me that what would be in order at this point would be to have a meeting and advise the neighbors and nearby people of it and to, so that the, it's a 700% increase of usage. And in some ways, it would seem that your present use would be a good index of what your future use is going to be. So that if the neighbors were not negatively impacted by what you were doing now, it would seem that that would be, it would enable me to look favorably on the increase. And so that would take a public hearing where they, everybody was invited to notify.
We spoke to Bill Anderson. He indicated the concern of the camping. We immediately took it out. We also offered to meet with any neighbors who have concerns to see if there was some way we could come to a friendly middle ground where everybody was happy with the outcome. Apart from the one confrontation with Bill Anderson where we did take out the camping request because there was one small group who wanted to stay overnight, and so we said it's not that important. No other neighbors have come forward to offer alternative solutions. The 700% increase is the most dramatic potential outcome. Based on the fact that we're only doing 61% now, it's highly probable that we get anywhere near that. And we're happy to bring it down a bit as well if that would be helpful. It's just allowing us to kind of surge up when it's good weather, and then when it's rainy and miserable, no one, no one really wants to go out.
So you're averaging two events a month currently?
Yeah, yeah. And we've got 36 days, I think we've used 24. So we're underutilizing it now, but the trouble is, when it bunches, we have to cancel it. And we're pushing every cent that we can back into the community. So 840,000 so far. So we're trying to be good partners as well.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bird?
No.
I'd just like to pick up on a couple of items already addressed to some extent. I didn't quite follow it, but there also seemed to be some sort of question about facts of what the actual shells were that you were using. Perhaps there was some reference to shock gun shells being perhaps more ladder. I don't, I couldn't quite follow the argument, but I think, and maybe you have an answer to it tonight, but I would just simply say, if the extent we move this forward, you know, I think this is separate from any question about compliance, but I do think we have, you were operating under some restrictions about the noise level of the shocks that you're using. So again, it's a separate matter, but I would anticipate or recommend that you be prepared to address that. You really see anything about that tonight?
Only that in one conversation with one of the complainants, he said that there's people shooting on your land right now, and there wasn't. So I think there's also the risk that people are assuming that noise is coming from our land, and it's actually coming from some other property where they're doing shooting, target practice, hunting, whatever. And so I think people are getting confused over where we're there doing something, where we're not. And I'm more than happy to go through the different types of blank simulators. If it's a claim that we're using tanninite and we're not, we wouldn't do that. It's against our business interest to have anything like that on the land anyway because of insurance reasons. So we're using a variety of blank frying munitions.
And also, just with respect to the broader land use question, as I recall, this property is mostly forested and it is therefore, I think, still subject to forestry management to some level. So to the extent that we're talking about an agricultural use versus a commercial use, it's really not binary, it's sort of both. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I'm not an expert, yes, but.
I just wanted, again, to make that clear that I believe they're still doing forestry on the property. I believe there was also a comment, and I guess I was going to ask you, Michelle, there seemed like there was some outreach to another member, a member of the BZA with the concern. And I wondered if you ever, had you received any call or around that either by the neighbor? Have you received anything?
Not from the neighbor.
I have received calls from neighbors.
You have received calls, okay. And have you gone out to listen to, during any of?
I did not go out to listen, not at the time it was happening.
All right, well, I think it seems to me that the matter before, and I would also say, I appreciate your, I guess I share the concern that going from three days a month to five days a week is a pretty big leap, but it seems like it sort of takes you well beyond the scope of the known problem. So I appreciate your, your sort of willingness to discuss perhaps some improvement, but perhaps not the full request. But anyway, I think our matter tonight is whether we have enough information to move this forward for a hearing.
Michelle, is the application complete?
The application is complete. We've got, comments are pending. Hopefully, we should have a way of having a public hearing.
Then, in further discussion, then I think we'll, will we take this to a public hearing?
All right, sir. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
But all ayes. Thank you very much, Mr. Blath. I guess we'll see you next month. The next item on the agenda is a type of old business review. Question, kind of, let us know on Monday for the enterprises. I believe this was on our agenda last month, but the applicant was unavailable to answer some questions. I'm not sure if you have our.
The septic.
So is the applicant here this evening? No applicant. Well, Ms. Summers, you want to give us an update on, I gather we did get some information about the septic.
That is correct. At the last meeting of November, the planning commission tabled this request. They wanted to know if it was an HOA, if there were any covenants on the property, and for the septic and jury to be uncovered. The applicant had had that done, and we got that paperwork to the Health Department. The Health Department responded at a very late hour, it was after 8:00. With their comments, which I have provided as handout spread one here at the table tonight. Basically, it's a older system, a very small system, probably more suitable for a one-bedroom. But they just provided what records that they had or did not have.
And I believe there was also a test that somebody did.
And also, the covenants were attached to board box as well. The Health Department commented that. And received a copy of the letter generated by All-Star Septic, dated July 18th, noting that septic tank and distribution box were uncovered and recommending jetted a clogged drain line. Office has not received word that this has been done. Further, the letter notes that once the line is jetted, the system will be in operating order for a max of two people on a full-time basis. The Health Department obligated us as a licensed operator to make such a determination. And they also recommend an annual bacterial sample be done for the purpose of safe drinking water.
And we do have the HOA covenants.
If I may?
Please.
The septic is an issue. It's a very small septic. We don't have any verification that the one line was ever jetted clear. It's, it was probably permitted as a one-bedroom at its time. It's half of a one-bedroom under today's standards. Very close to the lake. So there's some issues with, they're asking for a three-bedroom, as I recall. Two people. Six people.
This is three bedrooms, six people allowed.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, so I don't think we could, I don't think that's feasible.
Well, again, we're in a bit of a disadvantage with the applicant not being here.
If he's not here, what would we say?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you very much. Which brings us back to the Hendrix Center. Again, we're still in preliminary review mode. Ms. Summers, you want to remind us where we were?
Commission has tabled the request. VDOT provided comments and concerns. The applicant worked with. An engineering.
Wells and Associates.
Wells, thank you very much. Wells and Associates.
I'll just holler that back there.
To get comments addressed back to them. You all have been emailed and informed what on board box those comments that we got back from VDOT on the day of the last meeting. I can pull those up. I hope everybody has had a chance to review them. And that's all we're at.
I believe there was also, did you, did you address the septic consideration? I think we had some additional information that I don't recall seeing. We've, well, we've not.
That had been addressed.
No, that was already in there?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I have no objections.
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sorry. Do you need to clarify for us?
The Health Department, this office has no objection at this time, provided it's understood. And there's a paragraph in there with, provided it's understood, and I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah, I was, that was what I was referring to. I just didn't recall we had that before our last discussion. I thought there may have been some discussion on that, but I was mistaken. And folks have the information on VDOT. And again, I believe the matter before us this evening is whether we're prepared to advance this either to a public hearing before this body or to advance it to the ultimate decision, which in this case would be, we're supervisors.
Can I ask, Michelle, there was a, for the applicant, there was also the obtained question of whether they wanted six bedrooms and they wanted 18 people, but they're, the category fit within, which I'm going to say they had, was going to be 16 people. So they were going to change that.
There's a, there's a number of acres, it could be a number of acres, and I can't remember where it is specifically, but there is a max of 16, and that's your prerogative to live, as a component of the special exception, to limit it to 16.
So you haven't changed your application to make it?
No, I've not.
You're still requesting 18, is that?
I can change that.
No, I'm just asking what you're asking.
Yes, from a technical perspective.
Yes, you can. It's, this, this might be in Mr. Hendrix's district. Mr. Bird, can we start with you? Do you have any questions of the applicant or comments? The rest I'll.
I, I think I need, I know what I need to know and feel that you could schedule this for me.
Ms. Ishi.
I don't, is, if I'm understanding, so VDOT has raised these comments that they have raised as of the day of the last meeting, those have not been fully addressed? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
No, they have. Wells and Associates, on a point-by-point basis, addressed each one of the Highway Department's concerns.
And do we have anything back from VDOT on that?
We do not have anything from VDOT playing. We recommend approval.
They're still reviewing. Is this back?
No, they're not, no, no.
I'm sorry, I was asking, are we still waiting for final?
Right.
Information from VDOT?
Yes, they're still last.
All right, here's, there's an email.
Yes.
From VDOT on November 20th. Is that not the operative document? From VDOT on November 20th. Is that not the operative document we're looking for?
That was the one right from last week.
The email that is November 20th.
That's the one that came, I think, the day of our, more or less, we really hadn't had time to consider.
That was the last correspondence I received from VDOT.
So, well, I think we should each read this to refamiliarize ourselves with it. So, Ms. Ishii, are you, I'm sorry, who's, did I go to you? Who's, who's got the floor? Are you finished, Ms. Ishii?
I, I, yeah, I don't have the floor. I, it just, it, so it sounds like VDOT has, VDOT has continued to work with the applicant and they're, but we have, we don't have any word back from VDOT as to use these, we don't have a word back as to these issues being addressed.
The last word we have is that November 20th.
That, yeah, that's the last course of our lines.
That is in response to, that is in response to Web Associates' reaction.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm going to be respectful, but I don't, I'm not sure what else we are looking for from VDOT.
Well, this, as I recall this, I, I looked at it earlier this afternoon. Neither the applicant nor the consultant provided a clear and direct response to my comment. One of the parties could provide documentation demonstrating that VDOT previously reviewed an application for a winery in Clark Lane and from this, provide analysis of a, VDOT's previous review is limited to a B and B. So it seemed like there were a number of outstanding questions that VDOT had before they could come to a conclusion on this.
Wells and Associates addressed those specifically, each point.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that the, the letter sort of stands in its entirety, if I may. The first part acknowledges that the history is still a bit unclear and not likely, it seems, to get cleared up. Then goes into the, if the application functions as described in the Wells report, then the existing will suffice, suffice with the additional information in that paragraph. And then finally, presumably as a means of remedying the fact that, first, there's a lack of clarity on the beginning, I interpret the last paragraph as saying, therefore, we should impose whatever restrictions we feel are necessary to ensure that the conditions of the Wells report are, in fact, those which would be operational.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Smith, you have a floor. I'm sorry, I'm not.
I just wonder if this maybe shouldn't be a special use permit, go up to the BCA, because it's not a large amount of acreage actually drawn into this particular use. But isn't the, the track of it dictated by the acreage and with only a few acres being used for this particular use? Is there a reason it's not being reviewed by the BCA as a special use?
The way the ordinance is written, it's currently written, they have every right to apply for this use as a special exception if the country ann.
Did you have legal opinion from the county attorney on that?
No.
I think the, if I'm understanding your question, that there was the matter of whether the acreage considers just the buildings or the parcel. And one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was that the guests do have access to the parcel and that this, you know, they, they are, you know, on that basis, it struck me that the use was, in fact, of the parcel, not just of the buildings. So, and it's not a legal interpretation, but it struck me that that's, that was sort of where I ended up in looking at that, that question.
A quote on the ordinance, it's just under the state's minimum size of car, which would be point acreage.
So I think if you look at the parcel size, it clearly complies. I think there's some question as to whether we should be looking at the whole parcel size or some limited footprint of the buildings, for example. And I don't recall that we've ever implied that standard when we're looking at a, the acreage of use for this type of use. But again, that's not the same as a, as a, as a legal opinion by any stretch. Anything else, Ms. Smith, for the time being?
Do we have the original permit from when this was made a B and B? Do we have a copy of that? Or any of the, of the very original?
I can provide that to you.
Yes.
Absolutely.
From the board supervisors or Planning Commission?
It was issued through the Planning Commission and the Board of Design Appeals. Because it was issued as a B and B originally.
Yeah, you could provide those up. It would be very helpful.
Absolutely. I would like to email one of the commissioners.
Anything else, Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Coler.
I don't know anything. I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of data here. It's hard to know exactly where we stand, but I think the, if there's something needed from VDOT, I would imagine they could get it. And, you know, before the, before a public hearing, but I'm, I'm not, I'm waiting to hear what else wants to do.
Just to be clear, I don't think there's any outstanding request or any additional information need that's been articulated. At least, not that I've heard. So if anybody has such a need, I don't think it's enough to say, well, they could do it. I think we'd have to articulate what that need is. Seems to me that we've gotten what we're going to get unless there's another ask of VDOT. You know, from my point of view, I think this property has a history of challenging engagement with the neighboring area. And I think I'm, I've had some concerns about the road access and the, and the extensive use. But all that being said, I feel like we should be ready to go ahead with the hearing and get that public input and proceed accordingly. I prefer if someone else would do that motion.
But you did it so well.
Oh, okay. Well, then that's a motion. If you all understood what I said, then it's considered a motion that we recommend that this application go forward for a public hearing the next week.
I'll strike that.
Any further discussion?
And that will be at the next meeting?
If we vote to do it, yeah.
After our direction, I'll just, yes. For clarification?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Looks like you've made it to the next meeting.
We have a lady too.
And finally, I know it's getting late, but we really, really, I think a sign of progress, if we can take some action on the comprehensive plan. I'll just remind everyone that we had what I thought was a very productive work session where we went through the thirteen or so comments from the Berkeley Group. Seemed that there was action taken on all but three of them. More or less consensus on one of them that there really wasn't much action to be taken because it related to language that we took directly from the Strategic Plan for the Fire and Rescue Association. And then on matter of village boundaries in GIS, I just, I don't think we got anywhere. And in my view, based on where we left off with supervisors, I believe that qualifies as something that would be, clearly need to be left to a longer time period of discussion. At least, that's my, my, my personal conclusion of how to interpret the conversation that we're, we're in that talk. Ms. Summers, I believe that has, has made some additional revisions based on some of the feedback and comments from our, from our work session. Are you prepared to summarize it or walk through them with us?
I really think we need to do this in a separate work session. It's almost eleven o'clock at night. And we're just getting started.
Well, I was sort of hoping we didn't, we would be able to move it. We can't really move it in a work session. I, I share the sentiment unless, and I think it's another point.
We had a deep rift in the GIS issue of the last meeting. And we also had a lot of concerns about reviewing chapters three through five. But after looking at them this weekend, I have even more concerns about them. So to try to hammer through a vote tonight, if it falls out, I think is really an important thing.
Sentiment of others?
I think the GIS is left for a future. I don't, I don't see that there's a demand for that. I would, I'd like to get this moved. But so I'm, I'm out for trying to move it forward.
Mr. Bird and Ms. Ishii, do you have any thoughts on the matter? I, I tend to agree with Ms. Smith. If we're not, I'm not suggesting that we dig deeply into it. I guess my question is, do we feel that there's, that is a need to dig more deeply into it? Or are we in a position where we are ready to move it forward to a public hearing? If we're not, and it's not clear enough that we are, then, then I, I certainly agree with Ms. Smith.
I, I have to say, I think it's a little bit insulting that you asked me to look at chapters three through five. I volunteered to look at chapters three through five. You took me up on my offer. I spent my weekend looking at chapters three through five and not doing other things that I could have been doing. And now we're just going to vote to move it to a public hearing, or whatever you're proposing to do, without going back to do some of the work that I've spent my time doing. And I have a problem with that.
Okay, well.
And I have a problem that we clearly were divided on the work to do on it. And because there's three, it's three-two now, based on the opinions last time we were here. Apparently, people think it's a can of it on it. And I don't think that's right.
Well, I certainly, you're certainly welcome to your opinion, but I would also say that this is the second time you've agreed to look at those chapters.
And the first time, I very narrowly only offered the scope to look for consistent versus inconsistent conclusions. And I removed inconsistent conclusions. I have put in more work, if not as much more work, as any commissioner on this body. If you're challenging my contributions to this.
I'm just questioning why you're, why you're taking offense.
I'm, I'm taking offense because we had a work session, which had an upshot from half the people on this commission, that there was more work to be done. And now because there's one out, there's action to be taken all of a sudden.
I'm sorry, but I'm fairly confident that I made it quite clear at the end of that work session that with the discussion, with the edges where they were, that it was my intent, it was our intent at this meeting to try to move it. So with all due respect to your, title to your opinion, I, I certainly want to hear it, but this is not moving a milestone. This is exactly what I said we were going to do after our work session. So if I could hear from any of them in commission, is there a desire to move or move any of this?
I guess I feel that if Ms. Smith feels that we have more to deal with and that she has prepared her ideas and pathways, we ought to do that. And I, I can only imagine it won't get done this evening, given time constraints.
Fine. I think that's, that's enough. So we'll, we'll look for another, another session specifically on those chapters. Sounds like that's the primary need, and I guess that would put us in a position to consider action at our next meeting, which I guess will be.
I would also request respectfully, Mr. Chairman, that everyone, please look at chapters three through five for their trends and concerns over the analysis. Because frankly, there are things we didn't touch on, like the trending of the population ages at certain times and then how that might correlate to the high school enrollment issues. You know, I don't know that that was ever brought forward. I wasn't on this commission at the time that it was originally discussed. Also, the minority percentages in the county, that was a concern when we discussed it previously, have actually been pretty stable since about nineteen eighty. Does that correspond with the upsurge in continued education? Or are there other trends driving that that maybe we aren't aware of? Also, longevity trending, which is going on throughout Northern Virginia, is that impacting some of the numbers that we're seeing? And most probably importantly to me, after looking at this weekend, what are we doing to buoy up our languishing agriculture numbers?
Well, to, to
I don't think we're doing enough.
Thank you for that. To your point, I believe we did look through all of the numbers during a, a work session. More to be done, almost certainly. I believe we looked at them with respect to the lens of land use planning and zone, which I think is the proper lens, but it's a fair point. I think we should all continue to be diligent and look through it as we also continue to try to meet the mandate to, to, to move this forward so we can, so we can move on to some of the other pressing matters.
The other item that really struck me as I was looking at, you know, proposed growth trends in like our free scenarios for little growth, you know, keeping going kind of as we are, really expanding our growth. We didn't really seem to account for what I think is our largest growth driver, you know, as we see in applications like tonight, is technology. Technology is almost completely missing from the conversation. So when I looked at the statistics, those were all things that occurred to me that I thought were central concerns and developments in the comprehensive plan that weren't addressed anywhere.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess we'll all take that under consideration as we move to a next step. See about getting something set up. I can't imagine what we'd be before the holidays at this point, but we'll see about perhaps a time sometime ahead of our next, our regularly scheduled meeting in general. And that meeting is on January twenty-second. We still have the additional information items there for your consideration. And I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
I'd like to add one thing.
Add, add an agenda item or?
Well, no, the, the ordinance changes, which are at the bottom. Ms. Smith wrote up that I've worked on the sign ordinance, and I did do a lot of work on the sign ordinance some time ago. And I looked at it recently, and it'll take me a little bit to, to get it back together. But I'd like to get a work session going for that at some point. Because there's a lot of things that can't, that, that need decision-making by the commission, you know, which way you go. So just putting that out for thought if you want to, I'd like to try to get to some zoning things instead of just, you know, constantly looking at the comprehensive plan.
Well, thank you for that. I think it's, I think the, the resources and the time associated with doing the ordinance, I think it's also a question of sorting out where we're going to get the, the necessary writing support skills that are, that are, I think, different for ordinance language. So it is a, it is a, certainly a valid.
We do have the, the mock ordinance, which I've been moving our bits into.
I appreciate that, but I think your, your efforts are exceedingly noted. Anything else? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. In favor?